Everyone, I will call the Bloomington City Council portion of this City Council Port Authority concurrent meeting to order.
And I will call the Port Authority order.
Thank you to everybody for being here tonight. Both council and port reminded everybody as you speak, you got to push the little green button. And you got to push the button so the little green light comes on so we can hear you and they can hear us online as well. We have a couple of members who are remote, so officially, we're going to have to call the roll for both bodies here just to make sure that we have an official marking of who is present. So I'm going to turn it over to Safa to call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll do city council first. Mayor Bussey.
Present.
Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Muah.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Rivas. Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Thank you. Port Commission President Bob Erickson.
Present.
Mayor Bussey.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt.
Present.
Commissioner Luns.
Here.
And Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Safa. Appreciate that. On our agenda tonight, we have one item for our concurrent meeting. This is new business, is an update on the MOA water park project. Let the record indicate, Councilmember Lohman is in the house now. I wanted to point out that this is, this is a good old fashioned study session. This is an informational session for both the port and for the city council. An opportunity to gather information, ask questions, get some clarifications. There will be no votes taken tonight. This is not a public hearing tonight. This is an opportunity for us to learn more and to ask questions of staff. And that's what we're here to do tonight and looking forward to it because this is the next step on a journey that we've been on for a while. Commissioner Luns, yes.
Jim?
Commissioner Luns, yes.
Frozen. Hello. Mr. Bussey.
Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Luns, can you hear me?
Yes, just like I can, like getting an echo. I'd like to inform you, we have an hour and a half of time before we're have to leave this public venue.
Very good. We will do what we can to get through there, through all their questions. Rob, thank you. All right. Any additional questions, comments as we get started here? Port, council? Hearing none. Ms. Maisick, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, President Erickson, council members and commissioners. My name is Holly Maisick. I am the Port Authority Administrator for the Port of the City of Bloomington. And I would like to reiterate, this is an informational only item this evening. We are here to update you on plans for a water park being proposed at the Mall of America. We'd like to answer any questions you may have about the project and then look for you for direction to proceed with analyzing this project and returning to you with the term sheet. Could you please bring up these slides? The other presentation, please. All right. Thank you very much. So taking you through our agenda this evening, we'll be going through an introduction of the project. We'll be grounding you in the 2013 South Loop principles for the area as well as the 2016 Mall of America contract objectives. We'll be talking about an overview of water park design and sustainability, and that section of our presentation will be presented to you by representatives of Triple Five. We will also be going through the proposed public financial assistance for this project, talking in high level about the benefits and risks, and then opening the floor to questions.
And just to be clear, I'm sorry for interrupting, but just to be clear, you'd ask us to hold our questions until the end to have that discussion, or do you want us to ask questions as we go along here? What would be best for you?
Please hold your questions until the end.
Will do.
And we will bring everyone that presented back up to the podium so that we can answer them together.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. So why a water park? This has actually been part of the mall's plan since its inception in the 1980s. There are water parks at their other large mall properties, including in Edmonton and in New Jersey. And conversations started in earnest about this water park in 2018 here in the City of Bloomington. It has come before city council and Port Authority Commission before. Today, we have a slightly updated version of the project to share with you. Additionally, we have funding available to us that is only available for a limited window. It will expire to us in December of 2025. That is spending plan TIF. The TIF was already collected for the city, but was only able to be used for TIF eligible projects such as public infrastructure and improvements. Under spending plan TIF, we are able to use it for a wider range of purposes, including investing in this water park. The Mall of America is a huge regional draw as well as a local economic driver. It has supported hotels, restaurants, gas stations, any number of paired industries here in Bloomington. And it also serves as an overflow site for conventions and events that happen throughout the city, throughout the region, throughout the greater Twin Cities area. The Mall of America has expressed to us, as we've seen with many other malls, that retail isn't enough anymore to keep a mall successful. Originally, they were looking at a 90 to 10% retail to entertainment mix. Now they're looking to evolve to more of a 50-50 mix to keep the mall healthy, vibrant, and keep visitors coming back. And so this water park is part of that transition. Additionally, this project will drive revenue to the city in terms of taxes, liquor and lodging tax, as well as revenue for some of our adjacent businesses. So that additional tax revenue has been estimated as follows, and I want to let you know that we are continuing to refine these numbers with outside consultants. But this is a general estimate on the project as it is being proposed today. And this is additional funding on top of what is already received by the city. This could receive another $900,000 a year in admissions tax. That's at year one. Another $40,000 a year in liquor, beer and wine tax, an additional 2.5 million a year in property tax, and the city portions is 429,000. And an additional approximately 350,000 a year in lodging tax. That one is harder to pinpoint as we can't always say definitively which hotel stays are tied to the water park. So we'd be looking at potentially an estimated additional tax revenue to the city of 1.7 million annually. So the project as proposed is asking for 160 million in TIF public assistance. 85 million of that would be spending plan TIF that's invested into the water park itself. And 75 million would be into public improvements, including a new parking ramp and associated infrastructure. We want to remind you that this is fenced money. It can only be used on projects related to the Mall of America. Additionally, this deal has an opportunity for the city and port to capture a project fund of cash flow after debt service, which would be split into two funds. So we'd be looking at 40% going into a TIF administrative fund that is managed by the Port Authority. And could be used for regular TIF expenses, TIF administrative expenses in the South Loop area, as well as potentially for affordable housing citywide. 60% would go to a Mall of America development fund that could be reinvested in the area. This funding has some more flexibility, much like our spending plan TIF does, and could be invested into a variety of private projects to support the mall's future growth. We would be agreeing on those projects together, the mall, port and city. And so we look at this as a benefit to the city that was not in previous deals. This deal also will require future equity. At the time of this proposal, we are not, the mall will not be able to bring private equity into the deal. We do believe that's important to the health of this deal and to proving out this deal. And so we are creating a mechanism in which they can do that at a future time. Assistant Port Authority Administrator Jason Schmidt will go further into the details of that along in this presentation. And finally, we are still analyzing all numbers on this deal, including interest rates, which are variable right now, attendance, ticket prices, et cetera. So as we present this information, know that we are still very much in an analysis phase. Grounding you in the 2013 principles for South Loop. We are asking you to prudently invest public funds to help transform South Loop to meet the city's vision ahead of market timelines. To transition the South Loop's built character from suburban to urban by promoting high density, mixed use development with heterogeneous building forms. To increase and broaden the city's tax base, keeping taxes stable by spreading city service costs over a variety of property types. Creating a new neighborhood which provides additional living and recreational opportunities for residents. Promoting a positive development environment so private industry can add jobs and employment options to the city. Increasing exposure and awareness of the South Loop to promote development activity here. Increase sustainability by using infrastructure more efficiently and sharing resources. And investing in place making to foster the creative sector and establish South Loop as a distinctive destination beyond Mall of America. And we are going to prepare for changes to development form and function due to technology. Additionally, we wanted to remind you of the 2016 Mall of America master contract objectives, which include to make prudent public investments that are based on a formula or ratio, not ahead of private investment. Used only to the extent that public resources are available and based on conservative financial projections and modeling. There are only four defined public improvements, and we have an asterisk on this point because spending plan TIF is able to be used for more than public improvements. We want to support the long-term viability of the Mall of America, protect the city's discretion on the use of public funds. Ensure that the Mall of America acknowledges its financial relationship to the city by promptly and openly communicating all important financial and operational changes. And then monitor the Mall of America's investment and maintenance of public improvements and internal Mall of America features. And so now I will be turning it over to our colleagues, our representatives here from Triple Five. But before I do that, I did want to mention that Shane Rudling is in the room with us today. He is a representative from Ellers who is serving as a municipal advisor on this project as well. Okay. Now we have Kurt Hagan, who is the Senior Vice President of Development for the Mall of America and Triple Five.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, Ms. Maisick. Mr. Hagan, good evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Port President, council members, port commissioners. It's good to be back. It's been almost two years. I think it has been two years, actually maybe over, March, March 8th of 2022. And I was just thinking, sitting down there, that Holly's kind of lucky. I don't know how long, Holly, have you, six months, eight months that you've been with the city of Bloomington. So you've missed a lot of what's been going on for.
It's over a year.
Five years on this project.
A long year.
Kurt, could I ask you just to make sure that you're in the microphone so our folks who are online can hear you. Thank you.
I'm excited to be back. I'm really excited to really present tonight what we've been working on for the last four or five months with our design team, with our construction team, and re-envisioning this project. How can we move it forward in the, in the financing climate that we're in today? And it's a very challenged one, as I know all of you have seen. But before I do that, I want to thank Holly and Jason in particular for bearing with me for the last, I don't know, four, five, six months. We've, we've been meeting weekly or talking almost weekly, trying to find a path forward in this challenging time and getting creative. And I think we have. I think we've come up with a solution, subject to the approval of these bodies, that would enable this project to move forward. I'm really excited about that. And thanks to Shane, I know no longer with the city, but has been part of this. Also want to thank city leadership, the mayor, the port president, the city manager, where did Jamie go? I lost him. For your patience in, in what we've gone through for the last couple of years since COVID and in bearing with it on this project for your continued support for this project. And I'd be remiss in not thanking the state of Minnesota, the governor and the legislative leaders that really provided this spending plan TIF tool. That is an incredibly powerful tool meant to help businesses like Mall of America recover from the impacts of COVID. And it's a, it's a tool that's, can be very, very powerful, as you guys have, have seen and as we've talked about, but you'll, you'll learn more about tonight. So what's changed? Why are we, why are we here tonight? What's changed since March 8th of, of 2022 and where we are today? And this slide says it all. I pulled this up today. Federal fund rate down here. This was our meeting date in March 8th of 2022. Actually, the first increase in the federal fund rate was March 17th of 2022. But one week after we approved the previous deal, that deal was structured around the financing climate and the interest rate environment that had been going on for several years when we had been looking at this project. The term sheet was approved, March 8th. Things started taking off, but a quarter percent point rate wasn't a big deal at the time. We re-engaged our design team. This is when we shifted from the nonprofit model to the private model and we went back to work. And it, over the course of nine months, as we were completing design, getting a GMP set of documents done, priced, getting a financing package pulled together to take to the market in January of 2023. That is, that's here. Right? So we did go to the market in January of 2023. This is the environment we were in. It's important to note that it's more than just interest rate changes that happened. And I won't go into why you all know what happened in the pent up demand and the supply chain issues and what kind of drove this fastest rate hike in the, in the history of the feds. But the impacts of that, particularly in the equity markets, were profound, right? They totally restructured the credit markets and the equity markets. When, when equity can get paid to sit on the sideline and not have to invest and wait this out, it does. Or it can buy existing assets, commercial assets that are distressed or can't be refinanced for less than the cost to rebuild those assets. And not have to take the development risk that new projects have. So that, that really, I won't say froze the equity markets, but it substantially shut them down. And particularly for an asset class like we're in, for the water parks, first off, there's very few equity funds that invest in water parks. There's a lot that invest in hotels and offices and retail even. But the water park is a very small niche market, so there's a very limited group of investors in water park market to begin with. Once you shut those down with, with the equity changes that happened or the equity market changes happened, it really dried up and there was no way to move forward with this project. So beginning probably about, you know, last summer, we came to realize that, look, this is not going to turn around in time to make use of this spending plan TIF tool. Even if it came down as fast as it went up, by the time it came down and the markets reacted accordingly, there wouldn't be enough time to finish the design, get this project financed under construction. And make use of this tool by the end of 2025, when it has to be spent as, as Holly was talking about. So we were left with kind of two options last summer. We could either go seek another public funding tool to fill the gap that's now been created. And to solve the equity piece that, that now existed. Or we could relook at this project and try to reimagine this project and kind of I'll call reverse engineer as to what could be financed, right? If we used all of the spending plan TIF that was available to the city, to the project, what's the maximum amount of capital that we could raise? What's the biggest water park we could build, given that, the credit markets that we're in, in, in the near term? So we, we looked at that. We challenged our design team and our construction team. We got together and said, okay, look, you know, here's the deal, right? Ryan Construction, our builder, really wants to build a project. Our architectural firm, DLR, was here tonight. You'll, you'll meet David again, really wants to design a project. We've got to figure this out, right? We, we kind of backed into, we thought the maximum budget could be about $250 million. So you might remember back in, in, in 2022, our budget was $310 million in $2022, right? So now that 310 is probably closer to 360, 370. Our max, we think, is probably 250. So given that, that, that kind of cap of where, and, and I'm giving you kind of high level terms, there are a lot of levers, right? If you cut down the size of the project, it cuts down revenues and all these things kind of interact. But we studied all of that. And, and it came up with what we thought $250 million would probably be the maximum we could finance and still generate enough revenues to support in this interest rate environment when this has to be financed. So we, we really tasked the design team and the construction team with kind of three goals. One, we need to significantly reduce the project cost by at least 25%, $100 million. Two, you need to do it without losing the entertainment value in the world class, of the world class destination that we envisioned, right? We're not looking for an indoor water park that you would see in the Wisconsin Dells or at some hotel resort, right? If we can't do this in a world class manner, we're going to wait and find a new way to do this. So maintain that entertainment value and that world class attraction. Three, we challenged them to really look at this in, in a more sustainable way, right? How can we further reduce our carbon footprint beyond knowing that the size of the footprint needs to get smaller? And you'll see as we come up, the footprint is really 30% smaller than it was before. So even though, so that naturally is going to reduce the carbon footprint, the energy usage because the building is smaller, but we need to reduce. I, I heard you all. I met with most of you to talk about this project and, and it was loud and clear that sustainability is, is a priority to the city of Bloomington. So we challenged our team as to, you know, refocus, let's double down on sustainability. What can we do? What can we introduce to the new project to really enhance our sustainability efforts? So we did that. And, and tonight I get to show you kind of what we've come up with. This is the former design, right? So here's, this is where we were starting at now probably a 350, 360 million dollar project that we needed to reduce. Drumroll, David. This is new. This is a new project. And the new wow factor, if you will, in, in, you read in the staff report, is really this retractable roof, which does a couple of things for us. One, as David will talk about in a little bit, the sustainability components of having an open roof are huge, right? The amount of cooling particularly needed in the summertime, if you can open up this roof, is significantly reduced. The other big change is really only two significant changes that were made from the old design to the new design. One is this retractable roof and the clear transparent roof being over the entire project versus over, was just over the water, the wave pool and about a third of the project before. But the other, and you'll see it in this image, is what we call all fiberglass. All the rides and slides are now on the outside of the building envelope. Versus previously, they were on the inside of the building envelope. Typically, they are on the outside. As you see at Great Wolf, if you go to Wisconsin Dells, that's traditionally where the fiberglass is. It's not an issue in the winter time. You think, okay, it's 20 degrees below zero outside. How does that work? Well, you've got 82 degree water flowing through there all day long. It keeps the tubes warm and plus you're only going through that tube for about 2.8 seconds, right, to get down to the bottom. But, but the, the heating in the, in the core, the cooling of it is not an issue. It's, it's really, we wanted it on the inside for two reasons previously. One, I think the planning commission desired to see that on the inside, not on the outside of the building. But two, it really, it has an attraction value. If you're inside and you see all of the slides and rides, there's an excitement value to it that we wanted to keep inside. So we looked at, okay, well, if we can push that outside of the envelope, that allows us to thereby shrink up the, the building envelope quite a bit, right? While keeping the same rides and slides, I mean, you can envision if, if the building footprint now had to encapsulate those rides and slide, or the slide towers that are on the outside, how much bigger that would be. So by, we didn't, technically, we didn't move the slides and slides outside. We actually moved the building envelope inside, right? You still get on the rides and slides and exit the rides and slides on the inside, as you have would at Great Wolf or any other places. But, but the fiberglass is on the outside. But by having the open roof and open glass walls, you still have that excitement value of seeing all of those rides and slides from inside the project. This is the new floor plan. And what you'll note, if you remember in the old floor plan, almost this entire area was the wave pool. By, by taking out or substantially reducing the size of that wave pool, now it's over here and it's about 7,000 square feet for, versus what was, I think, about 52,000 square feet before. It was a lake. It was biggest wave pool. It would have been the biggest wave pool in North America. But now by going to a more modest sized wave pool, we really freed up a lot of floor space, right? Essentially freeing up about 40,000 square feet of floor space that we can now keep the rides and slides that we had before. Not only do we keep the rides and slides that we had before, we've actually added, I'm sorry, added to the rides and slides that we had before, mostly in additional children's play areas, which is, is one of the most desired areas and attractions in our other water parks. It's really places for the kids. And so we've enhanced the children's play areas that, and added to the children's play areas that are where the former wave pool was at. I'll show you a couple, three renderings that really show how we've maintained. All of the theming, the storyline that we had before is still there. We've, we've not sacrificed any of that or cut back on any of that. Daytime rendering. We've actually, you'll see in a, in a coming up slide, we've actually increased the seating, not by much, but there's five seats more in this water park than there was in the, in the, in the previous water park. Nighttime, as in the old plan, we will invest in theatrical lighting. So there's very exciting atmosphere going on at night. This is what that, I took, pulled some images or had David pull some images from open air, the group that we're dealing with. They're out of Toronto. They've actually done hundreds of these open air structures, not all in water parks. In fact, there's only about 20 of them that are in water parks, most of them in municipal pools, much smaller scale. This will be the largest structure they've ever done by, by a lot, but they're excited about doing that. But this will give you kind of the feel of what that looks like inside the project. This is a comparison of the original plan and the revised plan. So when, oops, I'm sorry. You know, when some, you've seen on, on some of the staff reports, 144,000 square feet, 222,000 square feet. One of the differences, the 222 is the gross square footage. That's the overall building size. That includes back of house and mechanical rooms, things like that. 144 is a public area. We call, in the industry, they call it the pool hall. That's where, where you can go as a guest all over the area. So this is about 144,000 square feet. So to put it in comparison to, you're, you're all familiar with Great Wolf. Great Wolf is about, I think it's 70 or 75,000 square feet gross, right? This is still about three times the size of, of a Great Wolf Lodge. The water consumption, we haven't done, obviously, we haven't re-engaged the engineers to redesign this whole water park. But in talking to the aquatics engineer, the biggest water consumer of the former water park was the wave pool, right? You've got a body of water that's that big and heated. There's a lot of evaporation and all of the guests coming in and out. You lose a lot of water. So by reducing the size of the wave pool, literally 87%, we're going to reduce our water consumption significantly. Estimates by our, our aquatics engineers, probably somewhere between 25 and 35% less water consumption for the entire project. The electrical consumption is really the bigger savings because not only are we reducing the envelope by 30%, which naturally, again, reduces the amount of area that you need to cool or heat. But now by introducing the open air structure and the retractable roof, that, that again, according to open air, up to 27% energy savings. So you combine that with the, the smaller footprint, we're probably going to be in the 50% energy savings range. Maximum guest capacity. So the capacity, I don't want to explain this one. We went from 4,000 on a maximum capacity. It's like fire marshal maximum. We went from 4,000 on a maximum capacity, it's like fire marshal maximum capacity to 3,000. That doesn't mean our annual attendance will go down by 25%. There's only, there were only 14 days that we were projected to exceed 4,000 people in the former plan. We haven't done the calculations on the new one, but it's probably going to be 30 days that we would actually exceed. So 90% of the days you won't exceed, um, the peak capacity. The, the, the capacity restriction won't matter. The days that it does, what we'll do, and we've done in our other project, including DreamWorks, is we go to a dual session. So on a Saturday, we have two sessions. You can come from 10 to 2 in the morning, or you can come from 3 to 7 in the afternoon. Now we've, we turn it over twice. So instead of 3,000 people coming through that day, if it's a peak day, we can get 6,000 people coming through those days. So there's ways to kind of, um, moderate and regulate, um, the annual attendance. And it, and I just want to make sure you understand that it doesn't mean, um, the attendance will be down by 25% just because the capacity is. Wave pool, we talked about, uh, the pools and rivers, um, the water slides really have gone up. You know, we kept all the old water slides. Most of these are new, uh, kiddie slides and smaller slides in the new kids areas. The total seating is up just like five seats. We've added more cabanas. The entertainment units per hour is the industry metric in the water park industry. They measure on a peak day. If you, how many rides can you go on in one hour, right? That, it, it monitors, how long do you have to wait in line, right? So if you have half as many rides and slides, your entertainment units per hour will go down because you're going to be waiting in line for 20 or 30 minutes. If you have more things to do, um, you want to be, the, the goal is to be above three. Previously we were at 3.4, now I think we're about the same. We're about 3.3. So we've maintained our, we call ETUs. Sustainable design approach. David, um, David Lehrer, uh, is a principal in charge of this project for DLR Architects, who we've worked with for a very long time. I know most of you are familiar with. I've asked him to come and really talk more about, um, our focus and efforts and how they're going to be, uh, moving forward on the sustainable design. So, David?
Good evening, Mr. Lehrer, welcome.
Thank you very much. That button to the right is great. Mayor, council members, port authority members, city staff, thank you for inviting me here today. So this pause in the project really opened up opportunities and some challenges for us. As Kurt had mentioned, um, trying to meet a budget and trying to have a wow factor, were some of those, uh, challenges ahead of us. But it also allowed us to rethink and reimagine this whole project. And, um, we wanted to be more efficient. We wanted to be more sustainable and we wanted to create this world-class amenity that was really part for the long-term for the Mall of America. We looked at the size of the water park. We, we looked at its wow factor and its ability to adopt the sustainable design input that we've had from the Bloomington, City of Bloomington Sustainability Commission and really took it to heart. And, um, we created a concept here, um, that we think is really, um, meets the mark on some of those things and we have some work ahead of us to, um, uh, validate and work this through. So with that, um, I want to kind of highlight just a couple of things on the sustainability approach to date. As Kurt had mentioned, uh, we used a smaller, more efficient footprint. And as we reduced down the size of the box, we also reduced down the size of the volume that needed to be heated and cooled. And that's really an important part because those are the major functions of the mechanical equipment, providing heating and cooling for everything else. So a third less of that volume, in fact, it's a little less than a third less of the volume overall. By, by pushing the tubes to the outside of the building, or as Kurt said, bringing the building skin in, um, it really, uh, provided, uh, we no longer needed to have as much mechanical units, uh, overall, every day of the year, uh, for the entire duration of the water park itself. Next, the retractable roof itself was a big wow factor, has a big impact and you can have the openness to the open air. But it's also critical to release the excess heat that's built up because of the transparency of the roof, the solar gain and everything else. And the trade-off was in reducing the size of the wave pool, we're really gaining a really unique, open air experience with the roof. So our very preliminary estimates indicate a combination of the footprint reduction and the retractable roof would reduce the energy consumption, not by a little, but by between 40 to 50% from the former water park itself, which is a significant reduction in the overall, um, energy consumption for the project. And our steps ahead are to validate this number through our engineering and our detailed calculations. So we're on the very preliminary part of this, but, um, we need, we know we're going to validate this, um, in more detail as we go forward. Um, next, we used a combination of a couple other strategies. This new plan has operable windows around the entire perimeter of the new water park. Um, that's important for a couple of reasons. One, it has, um, it releases again, uh, the demand for mechanical systems and it also has natural ventilation coming through. So guests have this experience of an outdoor environment, um, inside the water park and we can control it. The operable windows are also synchronized to the roof. So as we need to, from, uh, um, releasing heat or encouraging more ventilation, we can use the roof and the windows in a synchronized fashion to improve the, uh, fresh air, the comfort for the, uh, guests in the water park. And the other aspect of the overall roof design is that by having a clear, transparent roof, we can reduce down the, uh, reliance on artificial lighting by as much as 30%. So having as much daylight as possible in the whole water park, we don't have the reliance on the artificial lighting throughout the project. And maybe just a couple of other points. One is on the prefabrication aspects of this, uh, water park piece. As Kurt mentioned, it's a tried and true system that's prefabricated and made off-site. Uh, the roof trusses, the, the structure itself, the columns are prefabricated, prefabricated technologies that reduces the waste. It, uh, increases actually the durability of the finishes. It's using recycled aluminum products, so it's using that kind of material all the way through. And then we also, um, with the, the trade-off of a less of a, uh, an impact with a larger wave pool, we have less water that we're treating and managing all the way through. So, um, in a sense, there's less heating of the water. It means there's less energy consumption overall. So, um, at this preliminary stage in the project, we estimate that between 25 and 35% reduction in, in water will occur with this new plan. Uh, we plan to meet with the Sustainability Commission on April 9th. Um, we want to, um, present this concept, start the dialogue again, um, really solicit the input because it was so valuable last time in order to get to this kind of point, this kind of thinking right from the beginning. We really, we really appreciate that kind of input all the way through. It's challenged us all the way through for a building that is truly unique. There's not another benchmark from a sustainable point of view project like this. Uh, we also are planning to meet with, uh, leaders, both national and local leaders of the U.S. Green Building Council on April 12th. So we're moving ahead with, uh, starting these kinds of dialogues and kind of planning that out. But, um, what we really do is we really appreciate your input here. We're at the early stages of this. These are the areas that we saw that were really important, things to focus on. And that's why we came here tonight to present this concept as much as we could. So, back to you, Kurt.
Thank you, David. So in summary, I'll just, you know, it's summarizing the benefits of the new design. We've reduced the overall square footage of the project to achieve our cost reduction requirements, but we believe we've actually increased the attraction value for the water park guests and significantly reducing our energy consumption and carbon footprint. The benefits of the project to Mall of America, you guys all know, they're, they're obvious. The impacts of the pandemic have only amplified the importance of adding additional attractions to Mall of America to sustain our traffic and tourism, which is our lifeblood. This is the next step in the evolution transformation of our project to keep Mall of America sustainable for decades to come. And as these bodies know, and, and, and staff report pointed out, the benefits to the Bloomington hospitality community and to the city of Bloomington and to the region, uh, between the hospital, Bloomington Hospitality Community and Mall of America, we generate about 20 to 24% of the taxes that go into the city's general fund. So it's important to the city to keep Mall of America, um, and tourism and traffic coming to Bloomington, to our hotels, to our restaurants and to the mall to sustain that Bloomington tax base for the benefit of the Bloomington residents. So with that, I thank you for your consideration and I ask for your support in moving this project forward and we'll stand for questions.
Actually, I think we'll get into the questions as we, after we wrap up the presentations, correct? So, thank you, gentlemen. Don't go far. I'm sure there, I know there are questions. And now Jason Schmidt from our Port Authority.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, President and Commissioners. Just want to quickly highlight once again, the project, proposed project that we're looking at here is about a 144,000 square foot pool hall. Once again, it's including a wave pool and a lazy river, over 30 water features and slides. And the total project cost with reserves, financial reserves and everything, is right around $373 million. And so as Port Authority Administrator Maisick stated earlier in her presentation, the proposal is to invest Mall of America TIF into this water park project. But before I get into that overall proposal, I just want to kind of hit on some key areas as to how TIF works, kind of give a quick understanding of the Mall of America TIF district as it stands today, and then a little bit more information with regards to the spending plan TIF, that special legislation that was approved in 2021. So how TIF works? So based on legislation, um, what it is, once a TIF district is established and created, it is a portion of the property taxes of those TIF district properties, um, that they pay in property taxes is collected and moved in and called what we call tax increment. That tax increment will come to the city and it gets placed into two accounts. We set up two accounts. One is a project fund account. That money is set aside specifically for the developments as they move forward. And based on the approved development agreements that the city council, port authority, or even the HRA approves, that is how that mon- money is then allocated and defined within those projects. We also have a second fund, which is called our Administration and Reserve Fund. That is a small set of the increment that comes in, usually between 10 to 20% of the increment that is used to help pay for city staff services as far as administering, administering these accounts, as well as it is at the port authority, the city council or the HRA's discretion to use those funds on other projects, um, within a defined area that meet the TIF eligible requirements. As I stated, the use of these funds can either be for public improvements, um, such as parking ramps, utilities, roads, um, or, um, a preview or a statute limitation as well, does allow it to be used for affordable housing. And sometimes that affordable housing can be used citywide or within a specific geographical area. It all depends on the creation and timing of that, uh, TIF district. And lastly, staff and working with our consultants, we do a perform a analysis and make sure that the, that basically we do a needs analysis to make sure that the project is warranted and needed, um, for this public assistance. So the Mall of America's TIF district, so this is the Mall of America's public funding source that has been created. This district was created in the 1980s when the original Mall of America was created and it has been amended over the years. Previous, uh, projects that have utilized this Mall of America TIF funding have included the Radisson Blue, the JW Marriott, uh, the office complex. Additionally, it was also used, uh, for the Mall of America transit station renovation. And now what we're doing is we're looking, looking at the next phase of the Mall of America in this project. The 2016 master redevelopment contract requires that all parties, so all parties meaning triple five, as well as the city council and the port authority, have to agree on the TIF use. Once a full public funding needs analysis has been, um, has been done internally and it contains other public purpose provisions. The Mall of America TIF district, the increment that comes in, we capture 90% of that goes into the project development fund. That is specifically for Mall of America development projects. And as, uh, Ms. Maisick stated earlier, this is fenced money. It can only be used within the Mall of America area for Mall of America development. The other 10%, that's what gets captured into the Mall of America, um, TIF district's administrative fund. That 10% is at the discretion of the port authority, which can be used anywhere within the South Loop area, uh, for TIF eligible projects, or it can also be used for affordable housing projects citywide. And so the Mall of America Spending Plan TIF, so as I just previously stated, um, normally TIF can only be used for TIF eligible expenses as I, as that is typical, uh, public improvements or creating affordable housing. However, the 2021 legislation, uh, that came out right after, uh, the COVID pandemic, it allowed flexibility for TIF to be, TIF dollars to be moved into a spending plan account. Spending plan TIF, once it's moved into that account, provides the ability to directly fund private projects. So that can go in as equity or other similar investments. And that determination just has to be made to make sure that the construction is feasible and it's also creating and retaining jobs. As Ms. Maisick stated earlier, spending plan TIF does have an expiration date. Um, so that does expire on December 31st of 2025. What expires is that flexibility. So any funding dollars that are still within the spending plan TIF account after December 31st of 2025, just gets moved over back into the regular TIF account and has to follow the, the regular TIF eligible expenses. And so I wanted to give a quick highlight as far as what are the fund balances of the accounts of the Mall of America TIF district. And so back in 2000, um, 2022, December of 2022, that is when the city council and port authority passed the spending plan for the Mall of America TIF district. At that time, uh, the, the boards designated the movement of the funds of about $95.2 million over into that account. As of today, as of the end of 2023, the fund balance of that spending plan TIF was $89 million. At the end of 2023, there was about $14 million in the regular Mall of America TIF Capital Projects Fund. And we are estimating on average for the next 10 years, um, that this account is going to have about an addition, about on average, $10 million of new increment coming into that district. This district is, uh, slated to end or to no longer receive increment in 2034. And so I quickly would just then want to go over kind of the approximate cost estimates of the project. And so as I previously stated, this is, project is right around $373 million, of which 205, excuse me, $250 million is for the water park project for the shell, um, and, uh, slides and everything within it. It's about $75 million for the ramp and public infrastructure expenses. And the remaining additional costs are, are round out to about 48 million. And that accounts for the land as well as, uh, the financing costs and reserves that are needed for the project. So as stated earlier, the public assistance, uh, proposed for this project is to invest about $160 million of that Mall of America, uh, TIF dollars. That's separated into two accounts. So 85 million would come from that Mall of America TIF spending plan account. The other 75 million of regular TIF would go into the Mall of America TIF ramp. And so that would be slated from that 14 million that was, that is within that account, as well as the future increment to pay down any future bond we would potentially take out, uh, for that parking ramp. And then the remaining amount, the 213 million, uh, would need to come, uh, from a private lender with which, uh, triple five would need to secure that private financing. And so with over 40% of the total project cost coming from TIF and also without any private equity into this deal, uh, staff analyzed this and tried to understand, okay, we need to look at how do we capture cash flow to hopefully then replenish these accounts? So what the proposal is, uh, before you today for consideration, um, and discussion is for staff or for us to capture 100% of profits from the water park after the required debt service has been paid. So the water park will make, will have a revenue coming in. Once they pay all of their expenses, as well as their debt service that is owed to their private lender, that is the profit. That profits is the portion that would be collected. What the proposal is, is that they, this would be dispersed into two accounts based on a percentage of 60% into a Mall of America Development Fund. This fund would be used, um, at the discretion and approval of the city council, the port authority, as well as triple five, and it would serve as gap. Authority, as well as Triple Five, and it would serve as gap financing on these future Mall of America development projects within the area. The remaining 40% of that cash flow that would be captured would then flow into the Port Authority's Mall of America TIF administrative fund. Uses from that fund, as I've stated earlier, would be solely at the discretion of the Port Authority and could be used for TIF eligible projects within the South Loop area, as well as it could be used for affordable housing projects citywide. What we are proposing is that a minimum of $100 million would need to be captured between these two accounts before this cash flow could be terminated. And so capture of this cash flow would not stop until Triple Five and the water park entity would be able to bring private equity to the deal. And I should state as well, the minimum amount is, the minimum is 100 million. There could always be more money coming into that account if the private equity comes at a later time. So the proposal with future private equity, so once again, just to state that the termination of that water park cash flow capture does not occur until at least 30% of equity is provided at a future date, and a minimum of $100 million is captured into those two accounts. And so both of those would need to happen. If equity becomes first, and there isn't $100 million in those two accounts, we would continue to capture the cash flow until $100 million is met in those two accounts. If over $100 million is collected in those two accounts and then equity is brought, then the cash flow would terminate at that time. So just once again, just a kind of a quick summary, bulleted summary. So what the proposal is, is we would look to invest $160 million of the Mall of America TIF into this project. 85 million would go directly into the water park. 75 million would go to cover the public improvements. And this is fenced money that can only be used, and it is designated for development within this area. We would look to capture water park cash flows. That capture is after debt service, and that money would flow into those two funds, the Mall of America Development Fund and the Port Authority TIF Administrative Fund. And in order for that cash flow capture to terminate, the water park entity would need to bring private equity to the deal. With that, I'll turn it over to Port Authority Administrator Maisick.
Thank you, Jason.
Good evening again, Mayor, President, Council Members and Commissioners. So in sum, we wanted to walk you through the benefits of this water park. We've talked about a lot of details, but grounding it again, this is a recreational amenity to the city and to the entire region. We anticipate that it will be used throughout the entire region, as well as bring visitors from outside the region. It adds resiliency to the South Loop and the Mall of America by bringing new visits and continuing to keep the property fresh and relevant. And this is important because at this time, the Mall of America is over 8% of the city's property tax base, and hotels are 5.75% of the city's property tax base. And by having these entities paying into the property tax base, we can defray the cost of taxes for residents. We do anticipate new admissions and lodging taxes coming from this property, and new property taxes as the value increases here to the general fund, and we anticipate additional development to be inspired by this one, including a hotel down the line. So property taxes will come from that as well. We are talking to the Mall of America, and they are open to discounted ticket prices for residents, as well as additional perks, which we can discuss. And then projected water park revenue captures an additional potential funding stream that we can use for new projects in the South Loop area related to the Mall of America that TIF isn't regularly able to support, as well as for that administrative fund that we mentioned, which could also be used for affordable housing projects citywide. This project does also come with risks, and we want to be realistic with that, and I'm sure that will be part of our conversation. There is a risk that the project will not perform as expected and may not be able to pay its debt. If that is the case, that risk is borne by the developer and its financing entities. It is not borne by Bloomington taxpayers. It is still very likely to remain a water park due to the value of the asset once constructed. So we expect that perhaps another entity would come and purchase it, but we would also lose that cash flow that we had discussed, and it could not be captured for future projects if a different owner took over. We do not know the timing of the future equity. As Kurt Hagan expressed, the markets have been difficult to predict, and so we are not sure when the future equity would come into this project. But Port Authority staff and our advisors do believe this is an important aspect of the deal. We understand why the Mall of America is not able to bring it at this time, and so we have spent significant effort trying to come to a compromise where we expect them to bring it later. There's also risk to the city's reputation. This is a very unusual deal that we have constructed. We are, again, attempting to be creative with this and accommodate the current timing restrictions on our spending plan TIF and its flexibility while still ensuring that we are being responsible with our public funds and looking for equity to come to the project at some point. And then, of course, there are risks of not doing the project. That is always an option. There is a risk of the Mall of America's performance declining. Following COVID, their attendance took a dip from 40 million annually to 32 million. We do see that that is starting to bounce back, but we want to make sure that we're continuing to support their health and continuing to attract new visitors. We will not, as mentioned throughout the presentation, lose the TIF that is currently in this account. It will just no longer be available as Spending Plan TIF. So it could be used on future projects such as parking ramps and other infrastructure, but that would need to be supportive of other private projects, and so other private funding would need to be brought to the table before that could happen. So we do have potential next steps. As has been expressed, this is an informational meeting only. We wanted to start the conversation with you again, introduce you to the new version of the project, make sure we heard and answered your questions insofar as is possible tonight. We do want to reiterate, we are still analyzing some parts of the deal, but we wanted to start this conversation tonight. On April 9th, as was mentioned, there will be a special meeting with the Sustainability Commission. We understand that is a priority for the city, and so our representatives from Triple Five and from DLR will be presenting to the Sustainability Commission that evening. They also mentioned that the U.S. Green Building Council will be in town and has expressed interest in meeting with Mall of America, as well as some city representatives, to talk about what LEED certification could look like for this project. We are at this time hoping to come before you on April 15th and 16th for a vote on terms for this project, if you direct us to move forward this evening with negotiating terms with Mall of America. And then over the course of the spring and summer of this year, financing and design will be finalized. It is a new project, and so it will need to go through entitlement processes again as it is different than the project before. But we have been briefing our colleagues across the city about what this would take. And then we would look at spring 2025 for construction to commence, and late 2027 is when we would anticipate completion and opening of this project. And so at this time, I would like to invite all of our presenters back to the podium, and we would like to stand for questions and discussion.
Well, thank you, and thank you all for the presentations. Mr. President, I haven't cleared this with you, but I'm going to propose, as we ask our questions, if perhaps we follow the structure of the presentations as well. So rather than ping ponging around and everyone trying to get all of their questions dumped at once, that we go, we break it down, we talk about questions, we start with like questions on the background and the framework and so on, and perhaps adding in the risks that you just talked about, move on to the proposal itself, the design, the park, and so on, talk about the sustainability issues, and then go through financing. If that makes sense to everybody, I think it might add some structure to the question and answer period, as opposed to kind of ping ponging around. And then we can get into general opinions, questions, and opining as we wrap up. Does that make sense, Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor, there's one caveat to that, and that is that both Commissioner Luntz and Mr. Keller have time cut off at about probably half an hour. So I want to make sure that we have a chance to get their questions in. Hopefully, we can do that within this context, but if we move forward with what you're proposing, I think that's fine, as long as we are cognizant of looking at the clock and make sure they get their questions in.
I think we could probably do that. We'll have to see how we go here. Commissioners, remote commissioners, if you're fine with that, if we look like we're running short on time, or if you're going to get booted out of whatever public place you're in, we'll double back to you and you can ask any questions you might have. Is that, will that work?
Probably, but I do have one right away that you might decide is or is not subject to your plan. And it's just a questionable overall thing. When you say the terms are going to be presented, the actual terms of the term sheet are getting presented, is that the plan?
That is the plan at this time.
In April?
In April.
I'm sorry.
Yes, in April, the term sheet will be presented in April, according to Holly.
So we're having a general information meeting today, but we're going to be voting on an actual term sheet in two weeks?
Commissioner Keller, that is our intention at this time. However, we've also built in additional concurrent meeting time on April 22nd, should we need it. We will be open to how far this discussion gets, but again, our goal is to be both responsible with information, but also keep a quicker pace, given the constraints on the funding source that we have available to us.
All right.
And Mayor, President and Commissioner, I did want to reiterate, we have been discussing this deal for at least, this version of the deal for at least four months prior to this meeting.
Yeah, who's "we"?
Mayor Bussie, President Erickson, Commissioner Keller, that is the Port Authority team, as well as city leadership, and our municipal advisor from Ellers, Shane Rudling, and the Mall of America.
So this is going to be presented as a complete?
Commissioner Keller, short of a question there, why don't we make sure everybody gets a chance to get through their questions?
Sure, I'll restrain myself.
Be greatly appreciated, thank you. Council, Commission, do we have any questions? Again, following the framework, let's just follow the background, the framework of the deal, the risks associated, any specific questions to that?
Well, let me just, these comments really are probably with respect to the risk and things, and both, well, first of all, I should just say thank you to Holly and her staff because I know this has been a marathon session and everything has been done. But when we look at it, we talked about the fence money, and I like you, I've been talking about fence money for a long time because I think it helps to explain what that is. So if we take a look at the risk to the taxpayers of the city of Bloomington, this money is in hand, it has to be used for these purposes, it's legislatively designated. So the money is legislatively denoted for these purposes. If we do any parking ramps, it's my understanding that the parking ramps would be revenue bonds only, so that, again, the taxpayers would not have any particular risk on this. So I think as we look at this, it's just important to, over and over again, stress to the taxpayers of Bloomington that whatever happens with this project is not going to affect them personally in terms of their taxes they have to pay. And with that, I'll just, we can move on.
Very good. Councilmember Nelson, questions?
Yeah, just two quick ones here to follow up on that. This does not create a new TIF, correct?
Sure. Please. Mayor, President, Commissioners, Councilmember Nelson, no, it does not. This is utilizing the existing TIF district that is currently at the Mall of America. And as stated in the presentation, the increment within that district goes until 2034.
Okay, thank you. So just President Erickson's comments that this doesn't change anything as it stands for myself or any other taxpaying resident of the city. And can you just remind us the source of the money into the TIF and the SP TIF? Where does that money derive from?
Sure. Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioners and Councilmember, that is derived from a portion of the property taxes with which Mall of America properties pay. So it's an established district, so it's pretty much the Mall of America to the north, the Northern Lot, as well as IKEA. And so a portion of their property tax bill that they pay is collected, and then that gets funneled into the TIF account.
But Jason, I think it's important on that point, too, that several of the mall districts are already expired. In fact, the mall property is on the tax roll now, and they're paying taxes. What we have coming in now is something called FD TIF, which is a special case, and so that is something that's actually an extra benefit to residents of Bloomington.
Councilmember?
And I was actually going to just ask that same, how this relates to FD, Fiscal Disparities TIF, because am I correct in understanding that the city is receiving its revenue from the property? This is an additional tax that frankly is on all commercial properties, but that the state legislature has designated that the mall fiscal disparities TIF should be used to, for future improvements at the mall site. So this doesn't, this isn't, this isn't something that is impacting other people's property taxes. Is that accurate?
Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioners and Councilmember Nelson, that is correct. In 2013, there was a legislation that addressed that situation. So all of Mall of America properties tax that goes to the city, the county, and the school district that they pay goes to those entities. The fiscal disparities portion, and that was established in the 1970s with regards to commercial and industrial valuations and properties within the metropolitan area, that fiscal disparities portion of the tax bill is collected, and that goes to the state and gets dispersed amongst the various municipalities within the metropolitan area. The fiscal disparities portion of the tax bill that the Mall of America pays on the property taxes is that portion that is collected and is considered tax increment and put into the Mall of America's TIF increment account.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a question, and it has been asked and answered in the past, but I think it's just worth bringing up because it's been a while since we've talked about the water park project. And a question that I get is, you know, why would we be involved in helping to finance this type of project? And so is it common for projects like this to get government support, so economic development tools and resources to help make them happen? Like, is this a unique thing, or do water parks across the country that have been built, have they used these types of economic development tools?
Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioners and Councilmember, Councilmember Carter, prior to actually coming into this meeting, I actually just read an article similar to that, that states that on average, water park deals across the country have received about a third of their project cost from public assistance, that public assistance coming from either future property taxes that this, that that development would pay, or it's additional new lodging tax that is created within those municipalities or the state governments. And so it is not unique that public financing goes into these water park projects. I think the big thing and the big takeaway from that article that I read is the additional tourism that these amenities bring to the area. And it's that spinoff effect, as Ms. Maisick stated earlier, that the Mall of America has from the additional lodging, from the guests going to the restaurants within the city of Bloomington, the region. Just speaking candidly of family members I know that live out of state that come here for soccer tournaments and basketball tournaments, they stay in Bloomington because they're only at their event for a small, short time, but they want to be close to where the entertainment is, and so they stay within the area so they can go to the Mall of America, they can go skiing, and so that's the amenity in the draw.
Thank you.
Commissioner Luntz? I think you just muted yourself, Rob.
Sorry about that. Just a couple of questions. Couple of them are structural on the project. One of them is, one of the things, I read the monthly Bloomington Brief newsletter religiously after first reading the designer's message to the citizens. And at least once a year, there's always a large, large article, sections, write-ups on Bloomington's water system, extolling it how good it is, we all know that. We see- water system, extolling it, how good it is, we all know that. We see rough figures on how much water use it's gonna have, but I wanna know, what about the, both, not only the quantity of water used, the millions of gallons, I also wanna know about, will it have any effect on the quality of the water system? And I also wanna know about what are the effects on the water discharged to the city, to the Metropolitan Council Interceptor Lines? I know that's gotta be done periodically, we're dealing with chemicals in water, so that's something I just, this has been around since 2019, and I don't recall ever seeing anything on its effect, long-term effects on the Bloomington water system. So I'd like some, some, you know, information on that. B, this is for T5 representatives. In this period of dormancy and reimagination, was any development reimagined other than a water-based amusement attraction? It's the model that's been used in Edmonton, model in Jersey. I don't know that I see much innovation here, it's just a different twist on it here and there. And I'm wondering whether anything else was reimagined, or the expended costs already in trying to create this are to the point that that just couldn't be done. Well, I asked another one, a question I have is, my recollection is that the projections for usage of the facility were gonna be 65% tourism, outstate and regional Minnesota, 35% metro area. Is that still in place, those kind of projections? And I've got more, but I'll just, that's enough to bite off in one. And we've got, Tim and I about 20 minutes left.
All right, let's start with the, the water question. Mr. Laird, do you have an answer to that?
Not sure if I'll follow all protocol, but Mayor?
Please. You're good. You're good.
And other Commissioners here, regarding the water quality and the concerns about maintaining the integrity of the city of Bloomington's water quality, which is ranked at the top from many different conditions, it's our intent to maintain that, to do that. The preliminary engineering on the previous versions of the water park conformed with all the kinds of wastewater conditions and sanitary treatment of the water coming off of the water park. We'll have less of that in this new version, so we'll still be complying with all the kinds of requirements that are needed from a clean sanitation affluent that's coming out of the water park. And with this plan, we can be a little bit more precise with the kind of measurements of what it is, primarily because the size of the wave pool has gotten smaller, and the, the ride, the hydraulics for all the other rides are rather precise in how their calculations are done. So we're using innovative and new ways to filter the water, we're using ways to maintain as much of the water as possible, and we have conditions with a smaller wave pool to have less waste with the water. So those are, those are what we're working on, and we can provide more details as we get into the engineering of the project from this time forward.
Thank you, Mr. Laird. Mr. Higgin, the two questions towards you, I think, considered anything else other than a water park and the projections regarding attendance, greater Minnesota, metro area, tourists, and so on?
Yeah, Mayor, Port President, Councilmembers, and, and Port Commissioners, yes, we did, actually, last summer, when it became apparent that we couldn't move forward with the water park as envisioned, we looked at several other uses, and, and we did that with staff, with the Bloomington Convention and Visitor Bureau. Really, the goal was, with this tool, with this $85 million or $89 million tool, the goal is always, how do we drive the most traffic? The most traffic per dollar, right? And, and to Councilmember Carter's question, water parks are typically one-third publicly funded. We looked at a sports complex, typically 100% publicly funded, and drives about one-fourth of the amount of traffic as the water park. Multipurpose events center, typically 100% publicly funded, not only publicly funded, but then supported afterwards from an operating standpoint. They don't, they don't support themselves, and they generate one-third to one-fourth of the traffic. Why is that? Because a water park drives a lot of revenue, right? Forty, fifty dollars you might pay for it. You don't do that when you come to a sports complex or a multipurpose facility, and you're paying $20 for an hour of court time, right? So structurally, they just can't drive the kind of revenue that a water park generates. So a water park takes significantly less public investment and drives significantly more traffic and tourism. Regarding how much of that traffic and tourism is coming from in-state versus outstate, I don't have the numbers with me. I don't anticipate that it'll change from what it was in the previous report that we have, that staff has from their own consultant. I wanna say it was roughly one-third is coming from, we call outstate, as our traffic in Mall of America generally is, is about 60, 40, split between in-state, outstate. I think the water park will be similar to that. So it'll drive a significant number of, amount of traffic to Bloomington that stay in our hotels and that shop in, in our mall.
Mr. Mayor, and everyone, I think one of the important things for Rob's question is, why have, why are we going with a water park, or why are you recommending that? That is that the water park has been in use in West Edmonton for, what, 30, 35 years?
35 years.
And successful, and at the American Dream, since it's been opening, it's my understanding that the water park has been one of the things that's really been the best performing asset that you have. So I, I think that sometimes when we, we look at how to invest the funds, we have to look very carefully at, at what do we know the most about? And I know that in terms of some discussions that I've had with you, Kurt, and, and others, that some of these other things have been considered, but there wasn't really a good track record. I think, you know, we, we talk about maybe not being excited, but we also have to look at something being speculative. So one of the most important things, I think, in this whole process, and, and I know staff has spent a lot of time analyzing or has access to your inside information with, with the respect to the finances of, of both West Edmonton and also the American Dream in New Jersey. And so that's really a critical part of what we're looking at here, is how does it make the best sense to invest the proceeds, the funds that we have available to go forward? And that's where the water park has continually come up on top.
Councilmember Lohman?
To your point of trying to guide the conversation through, and I like that idea.
And failing miserably, aren't you?
You, you are. I'm gonna try to see if I can help you, Mayor. Is there, is, would it make sense to maybe bring up a slide that would maybe help to guide those conversations at all? Is there a slide that we could bring up to help us kinda move through it, do you think, Mayor? I don't know, staff has something that we could, could connect, 'cause I, my notes are all over the place.
I, I think if you just, you asked the question, we could certainly pull the slide up to, to make the point, I think, but.
Okay, it just, you know, just to your point, I, I like that idea of just kinda working our way through the, the presentation. I just didn't take my notes down that way, so. So that's part of my, part of my problem. And I'm, I'm happy to wait, 'cause I do wanna make sure that these folks that, that are here, they're able to take their questions before they leave.
So if, thank you, Councilmember, for trying to get it back on track here a little bit, to try and put some structure around this. Other, other questions regarding the, the background, the framework, the risks in general? If not, we can move on to the triple five proposal, the park itself, the design, and so on. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have one other question about the risks. There's other property in the area that, you know, hopefully we get developed. And if we use this much TIF on this project, what impact, if any, does it have on future development at, you know, the adjoining lands, things of that nature?
Jason?
Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioners, and Councilmember, as of right now, there will be, there's gonna be minimal TIF within that account. However, we continue to collect within the regular TIF district, like I stated, roughly around 10 million annually. Potentially, that could increase if the water park project moves forward, as well as an adjacent hotel. We would then be collecting additional increment from their fiscal disparities, tax bill, and those two. And so with that, we would then also be collecting, if this proposal moves forward, it would be the water park cash flow. So the annual water park cash flow would go into that Mall of America Development Fund, which can be then used for projects within the Mall of, Mall of America area, including the adjoining lands and projects to the north of, of the water park.
Yeah. And then with regards to the TIF, the, not the SP TIF, but the other TIF, and there's a note that includes infrastructure, does that include water infrastructure? And given the water usage there, do we anticipate that there will be any other costs that need to be borne by the city for infrastructure, you know, an additional well, a tower, the underground utility, you know, with the pipes and everything? Or will this TIF cover any utility costs that they need to do there?
Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioners, and Councilmember, Councilmember Nelson, so as far as the 75 million for the public infrastructure, that includes the construction of the parking ramp, as well as the streets, the sidewalks, the utilities within that area, as well as some stormwater management that needs to occur on-site. There will be some underground, ground storage, stormwater management within the area. Outside of that, any additional demand or, or pressure put on our existing infrastructure within the South Loop area, that is all determined by our AUAAR. It's our, our area-wide environmental impact statement for the South Loop District. We analyze that every five years. It was recently approved, I believe it was two years ago. And that analysis looks at development of this project, as well as development of the sick property that's, they're expanding on their Phase II. So all of that puts pressure on the public utilities and infrastructure within that area. And we have a capital improvements plan as to when the pipes and, and infrastructure, public infrastructure within the area needs to, to increase to meet the, the growing demand of development within this area. And we do have the South Loop Development Fund tabbed for that future expansion for majority of those projects.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioners, Keller, and Luns, I mean, if, if the, if we don't have an option to put another couple of quarters into the meter, I guess we'll, we'll turn it over to you two and see if you have any specific questions that we could get to before your time runs out.
I have one on this risk topic. So the terms we're talking about include a perhaps debt equity deal down the road, if I understand this. What control does a city have over what the terms of that kind of deal might be? And in general terms, what, do we, are we veto such deal if it doesn't become an attractive thing for the city? Or are there terms sketched out in advance that are within which we assume that we're going to agree to that kind of a deal? What, what, how do we, looking back in time now, as has been discussed quite a bit here, knowing all the stuff that's happened in the last five years, how do we accommodate the risk of change of circumstances and the possibility of differing opinions between the city and the mall about how those changes would be accommodated and deal with the lending partner?
Could we look to Port Council to help us with this question?
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I believe the, 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 the port has, wants that equity later, because that's when they can get it, right? Because there isn't a lot of equity available currently. We could certainly sketch out something for a development contract, but no doubt, you know, if it's 20 years from now, when the equity comes in, or 15 years from now, what we sketch out today isn't going to be what we need in the future. So we could certainly add something to the contract that talks about the parameters. But depending on how long their private, their private bank deal is, I mean, that could be 20 years, it could be 30 years. So there's a lot of variables. So we can add things into the contract about this, but to, you know, we're not gonna be able to come up with an interest rate, we're not gonna be, be able to come up with where the equity is coming from. But we can add into the contract that it has to be provided.
Yeah, I, I understand that, that the portra telling aspect of that. But the question really is more what veto power we have, rather than what forecasting power we have.
I think when we're looking at this, we're looking at a term sheet on April 15th, April 16th. I mean, it would come out obviously before that. And then that's gonna have to be reduced to a definitive agreement that will be coming back at some point in time later. I think that, and, and probably fairly closely, because you wanna get moving on construction and things. But I think, Commissioner Keller, that that is one of the issues that is gonna have to be worked into the term sheets and, and looking at the, the various conditions for those things. Staff had, in working on this, has, has endeavored to take and maintain the principle that we've been operating on for a long period of time, that, that we get maximum information, and that we also have the ability to take and approve these documents in some way, shape, or form before they go out. So I would say that's one of the things, Holly, that maybe needs to go on the list in terms of looking, there might even be some conversations for the term sheet, although that's a pretty close timeframe. But it's something that certainly would have to be in, in the definitive agreement that we'll have to follow.
And are we gonna see any more details of that before that's presented to us? Are we gonna have any input in that? Because we're really not having any input on this term sheet. It's just being presented to us in 10 days without any meaningful participation.
Well, Commissioner, I, for my time on the Port Authority, I think a lot of this is staff-driven, and the work, the result of what the staff does comes back to the Port Authority for, for review and comment. And I, I don't recall a time when we've had Port Authority members sitting in on, on the negotiations on a, on a term sheet. But to, to look at it as a whole, and to be able to offer comments, opinions, and, and feedback on what they see in front of them, I, that is how I remember, as I said, in my time on the port, that's how I remember it taking place.
Yes, I understand that. But looking at the schedule and how this has been presented to us, and I have some other concerns I'll lay out in my personal matter later, whatever comments and questions we have today, I don't see how they're gonna have a meaningful impact on this more limited scope of participation than we're being presented with here.
Well, I think the, the basic parameters are defined here. I mean, we get into a situation...
No, they're not at all. I've got a slide presentation that says, goody-goody, Bloomington residents get to save 10 bucks off an afternoon at a water park. The parameters, this isn't remotely anything like a term sheet, this is a slide presentation. So I disagree with you very, very aggressively, as you can hear. I do not feel like we, we, most of us have, on the Port Authority, have been given a meaningful opportunity to provide comments. And to the extent that I know I have, I've asked for input and gotten it. So I don't believe this process is as thorough as it is, seems presumed to have been, and it feels wholly inadequate to me.
Commissioner Luns has a question?
Please. Commissioner Luns. And once again, Rob, I think you're muted.
I'm sorry. This is all in the context, this is probably gonna be the single largest expenditure of funds investment, whatever you wanna call it, by the Bloomington Port Authority. It's basically taking up all of the funds in the TIF, in the spending plan, leaving virtually nothing for other developments. And I just think, I've spoken to Chairman Erickson, I've talked to Melissa Manderscheid, I am highly in favor of a closed session meeting of the Port Authority, where we can talk to each other face-to-face and go over many things that are in, in play here. And I'm hoping that Commissioner, Chairman Erickson will call a special meeting of that. The time is very short to do this in, to meet that deadline, and I don't know that delaying it a bit would be all that much, have all that much effect on it. So, and I'm gonna tack onto that again, which I articulated before, and I saw it in the notes today, that building this horizontal sprawling development is gonna help move the South Loop from suburban to urban. This is an ex-urban use, it's a suburban use, I don't see it as an urban use. So I think that we really have to think about that. Burning up the... Burning up the acreage of what's available there for a big horizontal use. And I'll let it sit at that right now.
Well, Commissioner Luns, I've already communicated to Holly that, you know, if it's possible to do that, and we're exploring whether this comes within the purview of those things, we certainly will try to schedule a closed session.
Mayor Bussie, President Erickson, Councilmembers and Commissioners, I did want to respond to Commissioner Keller's comments and say, we do not mean, and Commissioner Luns, we do not mean in any way to diminish the magnitude of this project or the import of these discussions. We have been working to negotiate potential terms that will be achievable within the city and within the parameters that we're working in. We do have the opportunity to bring those before you on the next meeting. And you, as our representatives, do always have the opportunity to ask for further discussion or to vote them down. So today was really meant to bring to you and to the public an explanation of this project and to take in some of those questions as well. And so we are, we are open to conversation. But as Mayor Bussie has noted, generally, the staff have made a recommendation at this point in a project. So if there is a desire for departure of that protocol, we are happy to have that conversation.
To be clear, I haven't suggested a departure from that protocol in general. I'm just suggesting to you that you're not just going to come back with us in two weeks with questions, you're going to present us with an actual term sheet. There should be some breakpoint between a slide presentation and the presentation of a term sheet for us to actually not just get questions asked, but to lay down our own perspectives about this that may or may not be accommodated by the mall. So don't get me wrong, I'm not in favor of trying to get 30 people involved in a conference room in a negotiation. I just think we skipped a step here.
So now, are
We've shunted out the front door.
All right.
Thank you for your time, patience, good evening. And if I get home, I'll turn back in to the TV show.
Thank you, Commissioner Luns, thank you, Commissioner Keller. Thanks for making the effort to tune in.
And Mayor Bussie and President Erickson, Councilmembers and Commissioners, if I may, I was speaking to Port Council earlier about the viability of a closed meeting. And we do not have a definitive answer on that yet. So we will get that answer too following this meeting.
Thank you.
All right, Council, Port, anybody still in the room here? Additional questions on, if we're, I think, through the background, the framework, the risks and so on, how about the, does anybody have any additional questions on those elements? Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, Mayor, no, we've got, I do have a question on the background piece. As a part of this background piece, we talked about equity. And I understand the mall's situation, given the economic downturn, given their position. But what I wanted to have, just for myself and also for the public in terms of equity and how that fits in past deals within the city and across the country, what that looks like from a historical perspective in terms of how equity has been a portion of development deals at large.
Sure. Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioners, Councilmember, Councilmember Loman. Typical commercial deals within this magnitude usually have private equity going into the deal roughly 30% to 50% of the total project costs.
And so for this deal, we would anticipate that amount being what? And then with the previous deal that we had back in 2019, just remind me again, because there's some folks that weren't as a part of this body or folks not paying attention, was the mall bringing equity to that particular deal? Help me, just remind me of that history of that.
Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioners, Councilmember, Councilmember Loman. With regards to the deal that's before you, so what is being proposed tonight is that no private equity is coming at the beginning. It is being deferred and required to be coming later at a future date. In exchange for that, a majority of the equity going into the project is coming from the public financing portion, which is the Mall of America TIF. In relation, because of this deal, that is why we are recommending that 100% of that cash flow be captured and put into those two accounts to be used for future development around the Mall of America, as well as to be captured for the discretion of the Port Authority to use within the South Loop area for TIF funds, as well as affordable housing citywide. With regards to the previous deal in 2022, when that was approved in March, if I recall correctly, the public financing that was going into that project was once again $75 million for the public infrastructure. $30 million was going in as SP TIF, as equity in the deal. There was also an additional $5 million going into the project for additional sustainability measures. So roughly $110 million was projected to come from TIF in that project. Subsequently then, the developer was required to go out and seek private financing for that deal. I believe they were seeking somewhere within the range of 50 to 60 million dollars for that project. As Mr. Hagan stated, you know, that is right around the time when interest rates in the feds increased everything and the equity markets kind of tightened up.
And Mayor, so again, my math is probably not right here. So then what we would expect with this, which we're not, we're deferring, would be roughly what amount? Would that be 70 million, 50 million? What would that be with this new number, 111 million? What would that, that 30% to 50% be? Obviously, I don't know what 50% is. But so we're not going to have that equity stake that we typically have had. And there are no examples of where this has ever been done in the past, right? Historically, where a private development for this city has not put any money into it, right? I just want to be sure that I'm just clear about what we're doing this evening.
Correct. Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioners, Councilmember, Councilmember Loman. As far as I'm aware, there has, there has not been a deal or a financial deal within the city of Bloomington with which no private equity came into the project and that it was strictly public funding sources serving as that equity piece. So as Ms. Maisick stated earlier, you know, it is a unique proposal that is before you. It is one that we, staff are trying to come up with ways with which we are still looking to capture that cash flow back, to put that money back into the account, as well as to allow additional funding sources to come in for other projects at the discretion of the Port Authority and the City Council.
And Mayor, I'll hold my other questions with regard to that balance of that, the funding, the 60 to 40, and then also the risks that are associated with that till we get later on in the piece. Commissioner? Could you please turn your microphone on, please, speak into it?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, a couple of comments. The first one, that the funding, excess funding can go back into the TIF for infrastructure and future development. Help me understand why the affordable housing component is in there versus being able to use that and it can't be used in other parts of the city for infrastructure or only affordable housing?
Mayor Bussie, President Erickson, Councilmembers and Commissioners, that is part of the way the TIF rules are written. But I will actually look at Port Council to define that further for us.
Commissioner Hunt, Mayor Bussie and President Erickson. The TIF rules allow you to take a certain amount of money from a redevelopment district and use it for affordable housing. And affordable housing isn't, if you've got a TIF district and there is a redevelopment deal there, but there's extra TIF laying around, you can grab that TIF and use it anywhere in the city for any purpose. For housing, affordable housing.
Okay. The second comment, again, absent of hearing the equity injection, I personally have a very difficult time just given the background of lending and so forth of doing a project where there's no money, no skin in the game, OPM is an old term. I don't know if anybody uses that, but other people's money. And again, I have the greatest respect for the mall and all that development. And you know, I'm a huge visitor there. But the, a project of this magnitude, and probably the biggest one that the port has funded, but without any equity and skin in the game, it deferred and without knowing what that is and the timeline and so forth, I have a difficult time with that.
Councilmember Rivas.
Hey, good evening to all. I just have a question. I kind of dug into this for the last few days and from our previous meeting. And I have a pretty good understanding of what's going on. The only one thing that I have a question on is on the simple TIF revenue bonds, right? Help me to understand this. All those bonds will be taken care of by the forecasted $75 million on the TIF that will be created after the park is built and the tax revenue comes in, right? Is that what it is? If you can help me understand this in a way that the people listening or the public can understand it. I mean, I don't a lot of reading and I know how it works now, but I have a hard time trying to explain it to the public. So if you can help me out with that, that would be great. Just a clarification on how it works.
Thank you, Mayor Bussie, President Erickson, Councilmembers and Commissioners, and Councilmember Rivas. We are going to refer that question to Port Council.
And the question is specifically related to TIF revenue bonds? So if we were to issue TIF revenue bonds, it would be a revenue deal. So it would be, say it's a $10 million bond issue, and the revenue, the TIF revenue would pay for the the interest and the principal of that TIF revenue bond. Now, a revenue bond is a little bit more or less secure, right? Because it depends on revenue coming from a project that's going to be built, which may or may not come to fruition. You know, maybe something happens to the building, maybe it never gets finished or something like that, then you don't have enough revenues to pay your debt. So it's a, it'll give you a higher interest rate because of that concern that maybe it won't be fully realized. We don't norm, the city of Bloomington usually does not issue revenue bonds. They almost always use general obligation bonds for their own purposes. The last time that we did a water park issue, the Mall of America went to another city to have those bonds done. Unfortunately, it fell apart because of the issues that were happening in the, in the world at that time. There was a lot of chaos.
If I could follow up with, just to follow up on it. What that, what that means though is that the city, the residents, the city's residents will not be responsible for those bonds though. That will be only paid by the forecasted revenue. It's not a real forecast, I mean, a real revenue, but it's forecasted. The possibilities that it would happen or not are there, and that is the risk. But it doesn't put necessarily the residents in jeopardy that they are responsible for that.
Correct. If, if the city were to do a revenue bond and they were backed by tax increment and then the tax increment didn't come to fruition, absolutely, the citizens of Bloomington would not have any ramifications.
From my recollection, when we had the initial project way back in 1981, 82, the city issued $40 million of general bonds that were taxable, could come back to the city. Once those were retired, to my knowledge, there has never been another general obligation bond issued. Everything that we've done with the Port Authority in the last 30, 35 years, whatever, has always been done on the revenue bond basis. Some are what we call PEGO, where it's, the revenue comes in. But in all those cases, what happens is, is the people that purchase the bonds look at the project and they're secure enough in it because the track record has been very good. The city has the AAA credit rating, that does, perhaps helps issuing revenue bonds, but it doesn't directly affect that. But at any rate, somebody will take maybe a half a percent higher interest rate because they know it's not general obligation. And so that's the trade-off that you get into. You have to pay a slightly higher rate, as Julie was saying. And in return, the bondholder says, I'm getting a higher rate and I will take the risk that if this doesn't go as it goes, that, you know, I may not get all my money.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor, and just want to thank Councilmember Rivas for his clarifying that for people, that it would not be the responsibility of people here. And just quick clarification of that, this TIF is already generating $10 million a year. So it's not speculative that there will be based just on this water park, but it's already generating substantial cash flow. Is that accurate?
Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioners and Councilmember, Councilmember Nelson. That is correct. You know, our projections though, we have to project what the valuation is going to be on those future properties, what the tax rate is going to be. So it is a projection, but we do have historical figures to show how much has come in.
Okay, thank you. And then my, my other question was regarding the land there. Is part of any of this money, is that land that it's going to be on, is that being purchased or bought out from whatever triple five entity owns it now? And/or is there a ground lease built into the operating expenses?
Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioners, Councilmember Nelson. That is still in negotiations with triple five. It is either or, a ground lease or a purchase. If it is a purchase price, it would be at the city's assessed value of the property. And so that's, that's still in conversations with regards to the terms.
Okay, thank you. Other questions as it relates to the proposal, the water park design itself, the retractable roof? Councilmember Loman?
Yep, I have those questions there.
Very good.
So I'll go through this. So then, so with respect, what I didn't hear from the mall is, you know, certainly we have declared a climate emergency, certainly appreciate the changes that are made, you know, with regard to the water and that type of place, space. The LEED certification, I know there was a conversation about that and I wanted to know a little bit more about, about that in terms of, you know, if that's still a pursuit that's out there. And then with respect to the windows that are out there, there is some additional, again, some of the stuff I can save for the Sustainability Commission, but I want to just kind of kick this off so you'll have it for the ninth. The solar, there's such a thing as solar windows. And so I'm wondering if that's something that can be worked into the process because during the last proposal, there were solar panels that were going to be a part of that and I didn't see those included here. And so I'm assuming those have been eliminated. And then with going to a glass type setup there, I know that when the Viking Stadium was put together, we had issues with birds. And I know that that is something within the city here, we have a lot of birds that come through. We've got a sanctuary for birds and I'm very concerned about what the impact would be with, with respect to that. So those are just a few of the questions that I have with regard to the building itself.
Mr. Lehrer, any, any comments related to those questions?
Thank you for the questions. I'll try to remember all the pieces, maybe start from the bird side and work my way back. We're concerned about the effects on the environment overall and the, and the bird life and all the other components that go into that. all the other components that go into that part of the city. We know that the Metropolitan Airports Commission are really concerned about keeping birds out of that area of the city. So there's a little bit of study that's been done. Quite frankly, the building design now has less walls of vertical surfaces, and that's really where US Bank Stadium runs into their issues with birds. So as much as we can, we study that. There is some mitigation efforts for dealing with those kinds of collisions with birds on the vertical surfaces. So we'll do our best to mitigate those all the way through. The second part was about maybe the solar glass and glazing that might come in, and we haven't eliminated that, we haven't studied it in detail. We're just doing some sun shading conditions right now. I think it would be maybe not the best kind of investment on areas of the building that might not get much solar power, solar attraction. So we'll study those things and try to optimize that as best we can. Certainly, the glass roof, the clear, it's a polycarbonate roof, the clear roof really isn't that the right kind of spot for putting in the solar. It's got some movable surfaces in it and other kinds of conditions that would complicate that on the roof part itself compared to where we were before. And I think we're trying to extract as much from solar water heating in the plan from our solar panels on the roof than they were from necessarily the electrical consumption. So all those things are yet to be studied and kind of worked through. And then your first question.
And then it's from the LEED certification. And the other questions, I'll catch them before you leave here.
LEED certification, we'll know more on April 12, when we meet with the US Green Building Council, kind of the conditions there. The project remains as a registered project. That doesn't mean that we have to kind of go through all the processes. But in the past, one of the things that became really difficult, and it's part of the green building certification process, is that there aren't any benchmarks of a building of this size or caliber. So we have to do some unusual things to measure it and kind of determine whether it meets the sort of standards for a LEED certification. They don't want to diminish the integrity of their certification process, nor do we in the promotion of the project, but also we want to use things that are of known quantities. And so we'll know a little bit more on April 12, and we'll bring that forward. We won't know that information prior to the Sustainability Commission on the ninth, but we're going to continue to pursue those kinds of activities all the way through.
We seem to have morphed a bit into sustainability, but we can go back and forth between the design and the sustainability. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I think my questions may straddle that. The first one's probably on design, not totally familiar with this type of building. So can you give us a sense of what repair, maintenance, replacement, longevity of a building structure of this type looks like in comparison to a different type of construction?
Speaking to the open air?
Yeah, no, there's just the entire structure.
So a question about durability, longevity, repair and maintenance. The plan that Open Air has, that we've been evaluating and kind of fine tuning, uses an aluminum structure. Our past plan had a steel structure. We know that the aluminum has far less resistance to rusting or those kind of corrosive elements. We also have consultants that deal with all the other kind of areas that might deteriorate or rust over time or those kinds of conditions. We really want to minimize that. But it, like a lot of things, it takes ongoing maintenance. And so there's a robust maintenance and operations plan to kind of deal with the project overall. What we've seen is projects that have good maintenance plans tend to have kind of a vibrancy for a long term in them, others that maybe cut back on that operations or those cost things. You can kind of see the wear and tear around the conditions. I think in this new plan, we are using more durable and more stable materials for that piece. I also know that we will go through a program with FM Global, which is an insurance underwriter for the property, and there's certain standards and benchmarks that we use all the way through. So we'll go through that same kind of process to ensure the front end, we're making the right decisions to minimize those kind of conditions over the long haul.
You know, I think Kirk could probably tell us about West Edmonton, that that water park has been in operation for 30 years, and so that's probably our best example of longevity.
Mayor, Port President, councilmembers and Port Commissioners, yes, that's been in operation now for 40 years. And the structure that, the Open Air structure that David is referring to is aluminum, much better than the steel structure that we have at either of other two projects. The steel structure does corrode, it gets nicked up, it rusts, it's in a very corrosive environment. One of the consultants we're working with is also an operator of numerous water parks in the country, recommended this structure and this company. He said it's the best structure he's ever worked with, he has no issues with it whatsoever, either from skylight standpoint, the operating standpoint, but also from the rusting standpoint. So it comes highly recommended to us. But to your point, there is very robust repair and maintenance budget as staff has reviewed, as well as capital improvement budget. That's a percentage of the annual revenues that go in for future replacement of that. But we anticipate this structure will last longer than the one we have in West Edmonton, and that's 40 years and still operating.
Can I jump in for just a moment, just to follow up on the question, if I could? Do you have other examples of this type of structure with the retractable roof, aluminum and so on, in this climate?
Yes. So, Mayor, the company that does this is actually out of Toronto. So they're headquartered in Toronto. If you look at their website, you'll see project examples that they have all over the world, so cold climates, warm climates, you name it, vast experience with this. Not all in water parks, I think they have 22 that you'll see on their webpage of water park structures, but it's solariums, it's, you know, concert halls, it's residential, anybody that wants a retractable roof over what, sports complexes. So you'll see them all over the world. So yes, there's a vast amount of experience in cold climates, even colder than ours.
Very good, thank you. I'm sorry, councilmember, thanks for indulging me.
No, no reason to apologize. Second question was just probably my own lack of understanding, but I would think when you open the roof, you lose all the moisture and humidity, and I would think that maybe you try to recapture that, reuse that somehow, as opposed to letting it just go. I mean, I'm just thinking of like my own air conditioner at home. It takes the water out and frankly, it just goes down the drain. But I would think with the amount of water you have, you could recapture that or dehumidification or something like that, and try to get that humidity, reuse it, not lose it. Because I mean, that's one of the big issues that we've talked about, is that, you know, the pools with people coming in and out and evaporation, you lose a lot of water. And won't you just lose more by opening the roof?
Mayor, Port President, council and Port Members, and Commissioner and Councilmember Nelson.
You covered it.
Yes, so one of the beauties of the open air, right, you choose when you want to open this retractable roof. Typically, that's in the hot summer humid days, right, when we would be normally air conditioning this environment because of the heat that we generate, not only from the equipment and the water, but from the people. You're creating a lot of heat. So by allowing that heat to escape and that humidity to escape, so you're trying to dehumidify, actually, right? You're creating so much humidity that you're trying to, so by opening the roof and letting that escape, you do not have to condition that air. So in terms of recapture, you know, there's, you're not trying to recapture the heat, you're trying to, you know, get rid of it, exhaust it. In terms of recapturing the moisture, I haven't heard of that as an option, certainly something we can ask.
And I thought, I apologize, but I thought I had seen that you do some of that, but it's more not humidity, but it's the stuff that runs off. I remember in New Jersey, it runs into a drain and you can reuse it. But that's probably more from the people walking out of the pool than anything else.
Yes, yeah, you get a lot of water coming off the kids as they exit the pool and the rides and slides. So is there, I think, if I hear your question, councilmember Nelson, is there a way to capture that and recycle that back into the project? I don't know that we've talked about that, David, I don't recall.
It's a really good question about how to capture the condensation issues and other kind of conditions. And typically, we don't want to have condensation on building elements because that promotes rust or mold or other kinds of conditions. So we're trying to fight that all the time. There are a lot of mechanical systems that can take in the air and then try to dehumidify that and maybe capture some of that water. But our examination of this roof structure is that it doesn't have to open fully, it can open partially. We can fine tune it to the climatic conditions, both inside the water park and then outside as well. And there may be times in which, as the heat builds up, as we've looked at the engineering of the previous water park, we knew that the heat would rise to the top, and that's the perfect place to try to exhaust out that extra heat. Even in our own homes, we have ventilations in the attic and other kinds of conditions that try to deal with mitigate the solar gain that happens during this kind of time of year. So those are the strategies that we're using to try to keep the thermal comfort in a good place, reduce condensation, and fine tune that kind of opening of the roof.
Commissioner Hunt?
I'd like a comment about extraction.
If you could turn your mic on, please, Commissioner, thank you.
The comment about extraction, I know there's certain places, depending on what the fluid is coming out, it can be converted to methane or to gas and so forth, but the ability to do opening just partial in that, and I think of humid air going out, all great, but you've got in Minnesota so many days where it's just as nasty outside as, and so certain days, has that open air entity given you any suggestions on, you know, on a day like this, or these are the factors when you may just choose not to reopen, or you may be only open X number of degrees or something like that? Or is it, you guys figure it out on your own? Or they have some kind of guiding principles or?
Mayor, Port President, councilmembers, commissioners, there's an app for that.
Yeah, okay. I assume that's part of their plan.
Absolutely, built into the software system where we monitor the humidity and the heat and the wind, the cloudiness, all of that gets built into a very sophisticated program and will advise you. You can let it go automatic, or it'll automatically adjust the windows, skylights, or you can override it, or it'll make suggestions, you tell you, you know, it'll suggest to you or it'll take control, right? And that's up to our operations team to monitor.
Thank you.
But yes.
The wonderful apps, right?
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. So my question is kind of around the maintenance side of it. Given that it's a private deal now, is there going to be any ongoing obligation for the city or the residents to bear the continued maintenance and upkeep of the building once this has been completed?
Mayor, Port President, councilmembers, commissioners, councilmember Mua, no, absolutely not. There is no investment of Bloomington tax dollars, period, on the front end or the back end. And before we're done, I don't want to get out of order, I know we're really sequencing, but I would like to come back to that equity issue. It's a hot button of mine, and I'd like to address that, if I may, at the end. Thank you.
Additional questions? Why don't we move on to the financing? I think that's where a lot of most questions are coming up, I think. And so why don't we start with councilmember Lohman? We can go to councilmember Nelson here, and then make sure that Mr. Hagan has a chance to respond as well. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. And so one of the questions I have about this financing piece, and maybe I'll start this way, and I certainly do want to hear what the mall has to say with respect, and I know the city, you know, work within the confines of what we had, and so, and I just think as taxpayers pay attention and watch tonight, they want to understand how we kind of got to where we're at, you know, in terms of what we're seeing tonight, and that's what I'm trying to just understand too as well. So, you know, in lieu of equity, did staff at all look to see if there's a way to have collateral with respect? Because that's typically in the banking industry, you know, if you don't have equity to bring forward, you know, is it possible for us to do collateral or some other type of form of, you know, to make sure that we have an insurance with our particular investment?
Mayor, President Erickson, commissioners, councilmember, councilmember Lohman, we looked at many iterations as far as with regards to, do we do a deferred, we're looking at a deferred equity, do we require limited equity? And then we looked at this no equity. And a lot of it comes down to if we start to get involved into the deal, that becomes part of our project, and then we become invested in the water park, and then the city taxpayers will have the liability. If debt service isn't able to be covered, it puts kind of the city or Port Authority's credit rating at risk at that point. So with this deal, like you stated and we presented, we're kind of working based on the parameters that we had with this spending plan TIF, that flexibility, and trying to come up, it is unique, and it is, as stated, unprecedented. And this is the model with which, you know, we are presenting before you to see, is this something that these, that you boards are comfortable with? And we want to hear these questions, and if there's any additional information as well that you need to get comfortable with, definitely let us know so that we can continue to do our analysis. As stated, we continue to run numbers and analyze this to make sure that it makes sense and it's financial, and it's putting the city and Port Authority's investment at a good risk.
And I appreciate the fact that you, in answering my question, you know, stating that this was what staff believe was, you know, one, the least risky for the general city and port, and this was the best way forward. You analyzed those other pieces. I know oftentimes residents, when they're hearing this, they don't get that opportunity to go through that part that you do. So with that, with respect, with the split of the monies that come in there, with this particular proposal, it's a 60, 40% split, 40% coming out of TIF. And, you know, by my math here, and again, I'm no accountant or finance person like my wife is, my number is here, something like $160 million. But then with the way that this deferment with respect to, by not having equity placed in the proposal with that 60, 40 split, the minimum is $100 million. Why not 160 million, the total investment, you know, that we are placing in this particular thing? Help me understand why the 60 million, million, you know, gap.
Sure. Mayor, President Erickson, commissioners, councilmember, councilmember Lohman, before I answer that, I also just want to state, we did analyze the least riskiest. The proposal we refer you, as Ms. Maisick stated, there is still risk. So I just want to highlight that as well, that, you know, that there isn't, there still is risk in the deal that we're proposing. Based on our analysis, it's potentially the least risk to the Bloomington taxpayers. With regards to your question with the 60, 40 split and the minimum of $100 million, what we looked at was what are our past recapture terms? So all of our public financing projects have a recapture provision within it, as far as if the project succeeds, and it does better than market conditions or market rate of returns, there is a recapture. Our recapture terms within majority of our other deals is up to 50% of the public investment in the deal. When we were analyzing this project, we felt that the SP TIF was outside of that recapture, and so we wanted to capture 100% of that. So that's how we got to the 85 million. Then we're trying to then capture the public improvements, which is a $75 million investment. That public improvement, the parking ramp, is serving, is going to be serving multiple future developments, not just the water park, it will be serving, but most likely, the future hotel, as well as other developments just to the north. And so what we did is we then proportioned the amount of use that the water park is of that parking ramp to come up with the additional 15 million, to get to the minimum amount of 100 million to be captured. That's just the minimum. If equity comes later and based on the takeout and the amount of equity that is built into the water park project at that takeout, more equity can be coming back to the project, dispersed between those two accounts.
And I don't want to interrupt you, but is there a maximum on that, on that amount?
Mayor, President Erickson, commissioners and councilmember, councilmember Lohman, as of right now, we are in negotiations with regards to a maximum for the Port Authority portion of the administrative TIF fund, to put a maximum on that. However, on the total amount, there is no maximum. So it could continue to go into the Mall of America Development Fund until equity comes at a later date.
Okay, so they could go over the 40% of the initial investment?
Correct.
Okay. Just. Just one last thing, Mayor, I want to be respectful of other people's time here. So I just want to make a quick comment on that, that we can address later on when we get to the term sheet. Given the risk that's associated with this, I would expect the analysis that was given to get us closer to that 160 million because of the risks associated with this, that we would try to recapture all of that 160 million regardless of public interest because of the risk associated with this deal. So that's just one councilmember's opinion. And then if you could just briefly talk about why the 60-40 split, the 60, you know, with the mall piece and 40, I would have thought that that would have been the other way around, where it would have been 40% going to the, you know, to the mall kind of piece and 60% coming to, you know, what we would be able to work with the city, you know, given our stuff around affordable housing.
Absolutely. Mayor Bussie, President Erickson, Councilmembers and Commissioners, that was a negotiated split. Certainly, it would be, we would love to see more for the city always, but the decision that we came to had to do with the fact that there is more flexibility available in the fund that will be the Mall of America Project Fund. It will almost give us a next round of spending plan TIF that we can use to invest in projects. Otherwise, the typical TIF doesn't have a lot of flexibility to it. And so we wanted to really maximize what we could do with the recapture from this project. The Mall of America has also committed to keeping that money here in Bloomington. And so we really feel like with this version of the recapture, we can maximize future, whether, I don't want to name projects or speculate, but as the market determines, we will continue to support the mall, continue to support tourism infrastructure. The 40%, because it does have those limitations, I mean, we still anticipate 40 million coming in that could support projects. And so we wanted to strike a balance between the flexibility that we had, the limitations, the future economic development potential within that site, and also spinning off other benefits for the rest of the city. Had our take been a little more flexible, we might have pushed for more for the rest of the city, but we think this is an appropriate balance and want to continue to support development in this area because that's the tool that we have.
Councilmember Nelson? Councilmember Muaw, and then Councilmember Rivas. Councilmember Muaw.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is related to the recapture. If something does happen, or we stop and we have a new owner and we can't recapture, I guess, what's the mechanism to build up that fund again, given that we no longer have, we no longer would have that ability to recapture if a new owner did take place?
Sure. Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioners, Councilmember Muaw, that is the opportunity cost and the risks that we take. So as I stated previously, majority, so $85 million of the spending plan TIF would go right into the water park project, and then we would use future TIF increment for the parking facility. So we do know that there's going to be slowly more increment coming into the regular mall TIF account for future projects, plus any water park capture. So if that water park capture does stop, that does limit the amount of future increment within the area. So that is one of the major risks that we did outline with this deal.
I think it's important to realize that if the mall ownership were to change, it would be subject to the contracts that we have in place. So all of these agreements and things would have to be something that if somebody else came in, would have to be subsumed by them, so they don't go away. It just would be a different person that might be controlling it. And as some of you remember, maybe remember, the Gremasians were not the original managing partner on the mall, it was Melvin Simon. So at any rate, those things happen and you have it, but everything is done according to the contracts. So there really should not be much of any change with respect to any of these provisions we're talking about.
Councilmember Rivas, and then Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Rivas.
I just have one question to you, perhaps we, I want to call it a suggestion, the 40% or 40 million potentially coming into the coffers, right? I would like to see some of that money being used in not just affordable housing. If you would come up with some ideas to put it into use in some infrastructure around the area, that would be a good thing for everybody in the city to see. I mean, I don't, I understand that TIFs are created in the ways that they are. However, in this particular time, I know that something can be done to adjust it, to provide something for the rest of the city, to work on infrastructure, not only for affordable housing. I mean, I would like to see that myself being put into effect in anything that we come up with out of this.
Thank you. Mayor, Bussie, President Erickson, Councilmembers, Commissioners, and Councilmember Rivas, yes, I mean, ideally, we would like to be able to see that money being used for multiple opportunities citywide. Unfortunately, right now, if it were to be used for infrastructure, that would be limited to the South Loop. I would turn it to Port Council just to elaborate a little bit on that, or if there might be opportunities in the future.
Right now, the South Loop area is the Mall of America TIF District. That, when we're using regular TIF from the Mall of America TIF District, we have to use it within South Loop, or we can use some of it for housing, affordable housing across the city. We can also use the Mall of America TIF dollars, regular TIF dollars for infrastructure, but that has to be within the South Loop area. So potentially, if this all works out and we have the deal and there is these two pots of money that come to fruition, you know, we can potentially ask the legislature to let us use that TIF across the city.
So I think what, the bottom line, it would take legislative action to release that money.
It comes to the state, I'm aware of that, yeah. Oh, thank you. I'm just looking after, you know, the constituents, I mean, that's basically one of the main questions that they have, are we going to benefit out of this? But I do understand it comes from the state, and that's hence the question. I want everybody that is listening to be able to hear that, or if we can present to them in a more friendly way that they can understand it. Because the misconception is that all this money is the city's, when in reality, if it can only be used in the South Loop, it belongs to that area, period. The city just kind of manages that, but it really doesn't belong to the city in all reality. But I want people to understand that there's the possibility, that in the future, we might be able to enjoy some of that revenue throughout the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a quick question around the recapture. So it says 100% of the profits from the water park operations would be put into these two funds after the debt service is paid, and I'm just wondering if we have a sense of how long it would take to see that debt service paid and these funds to be replenished or to have money put into them.
Mayor Bussie, President Erickson, Councilmembers and Commissioners, so the debt service will be a continuation, it'll be the term of the loan, but we would be looking to potentially recapture as soon as the first year of operation.
So I said, so this is related to the, so in the language in the package, it says 100% of profits from the water park operations after the required debt service has been paid to the private lender will be captured and dispersed into these two accounts.
Commissioner Carter, I'm sorry, that was probably a confusing way to write it. So the debt service will continue, it would be a longer term loan. And so it means after that debt service is paid, the profit after that, in any given year.
Right. So how?
How long?
Do we have a sense of how long it would take for that debt to be paid off so that we see additional profits going into these?
That would depend on the life of the loan that the Mall of America.
Okay, so we don't have a sense of that at this point.
Would you like to speak to that?
Sure. Councilmember, Port President, Councilmembers and Commissioners, we need to come up with an acronym to shorten that. Councilmember Carter, it really, it depends on the net operating income that the project generates. So I think what Holly is trying to get at is if the debt service is, take a number, $20 million a year and the project has a net operating income of $25 million a year, $5 million a year gets captured, when we anticipate the bulk of that recapture happening is not over 30 years, it's probably the first refinancing of the project, which is probably three years after the project opens. That's when the project will be refinanced, project will be revalued, the development risk is gone. If things go well, as we anticipate, there will be equity that is earned by the project, right? And then that equity that's earned by the project gets dispersed, it's a complicated formula that we've been talking about, but I think, I think that's really where you will see the payback of that recapture. Regarding the recapture, and what's the appropriate amount of recapture, right? I think what's easy to, that I think the default thought process for Council and Commissioners is that these are Bloomington tax increment dollars, should be regulated through a Bloomington tax increment formula, as we have in our development agreement. These are not. And I hear words like unprecedented, unprecedented, everything about this is unprecedented, right? Regional dollars, a community to have $85 million of regional dollars to invest in a local community is unprecedented. Shutting a mall down for 100 days for the sake of public health is unprecedented. The state providing a COVID relief tool to help those projects that were impacted by, for the sake of public health, as they have here, is unprecedented. This is our way, we did not get a check, right? City of Bloomington and the Port Authority got their reimbursement from the state of Minnesota for their lost revenues. We did not. Thankfully, the state graciously provided a tool for us to earn our way out of it. They knew we couldn't come up with equity for more projects, which is why they created this tool, why it specifically says in the language can be used as equity, because they knew hospitality businesses and retail businesses don't have it right now coming out of the COVID pandemic. So this tool is in place, this unprecedented tool is in place, unprecedented regional asset and resource is in place, and it's sitting there looking to be put to use in Bloomington to generate benefits to the region. So the question comes back to what's appropriate for Bloomington's take, right? In addition to the $2 million a year, which is intended to go to Bloomington, on the recapture, where is it? For an administrative role, yes, you have a fiduciary responsibility of these funds, you do. But where should those funds go? Should they go for COVID relief? Should they go back into the project for which they were intended to grow for regional benefit, right? We believe that they should go back into the project. That's where they came from, that's what the legislature intended for, was to grow Mall of America, not to grow Bloomington. It wasn't. You got your relief. So what's the appropriate split? Is it 60-40? We think it should be 90-10, coming our direction, right? So we can debate that. We agree, I think, with staff, that what we really want to see is, look, we're advancing $85 million of this regional TIF to get this project built. We want to see that $85 million come back too. That is our funding source to go back into the project. That's why right now, we're at a place where it's at least 60 million coming back in before we get a dollar of profit out of this project, $1. So the COVID relief is going to be delayed as long as your relief, or whatever you want to call, the administrative dollars that are going to Bloomington for their efforts in putting this deal together. And we appreciate that, and don't, don't get me wrong, we appreciate the role that you have and the responsibility that you have, but when it comes to what is appropriate to go back into the project versus go to South Loop or go to the City of Bloomington, I think we have a slightly different opinion as to how those splits should work, but I think we'll come up with a compromise. I think we've come up with a solution, at least internally, obviously subject to these bodies, to review and approve, but I just want the Commissioners and the Councilmembers to be aware of really the source of the funds and the intent of those funds. It isn't for South Loop development. It isn't for affordable housing. Yes, they can be used for those things, but that's not what the legislature intended when they put these tools in place. Sorry.
Councilmember Muaw.
Thank you, Mayor. And speaking of the legislature, I just want to confirm, we're not overstepping any bounds, we're not going to come back and get the state slapping us on the wrist saying we did something wrong. This is what it's intended to do, and we're not breaking any rules or any laws, and we're sure about that.
Mayor Bussie, President Erickson, Councilmembers, Commissioners, Councilmember Muaw, I would defer to Port Council. No pressure.
As Port Council, I have reviewed the original legislation, and it says clearly that you can use the special TIF as long as it's in a separate account for equity and for a number of other things. I've reviewed, I actually drafted the document, the spending plan document, and so I am confident that we are in good stead and have not made any legal mistakes on the spending plan and the use of, the uses that we are planning to use.
You comfortable with that, Councilmember? Good, good, good. Councilmember Lohman.
So I keep, I hear, I keep hearing the word equity. So I heard the mall's take on equity, and then I hear us talking about equity. So when we say equity, you know, in this respect, whose equity is that?
The legislation talks about equity that you can use special TIF as equity, and that is what the port is potentially planning to do.
I'll leave it at that. My next question is around the city's reputation, and I heard something about credit rating risk, and I wanted to hear a little bit more about that, because I'm concerned if this project would put our credit rating at risk. Help me understand that.
Lori Economy Schuler would never allow us to damage our credit rating. It's very important to the city. It's the best rating you can have.
I get that. That's why, when I heard that, that my ears, the hairs in the back of my neck stood up. So I thought I missed, I must not have heard that correctly.
So credit ratings relate to bonding, and we are not bonding for this project.
Ms. Economy Schuler, good evening. Thank you for joining the conversation.
I'm going to see if I get this right. Thank you, Mayor, President, Commissioners, Councilmembers. I'm just going to go that way. And Councilmember Lohman?
I'm going to go around this way so I can see you.
I do want to see your, yeah.
I have a height issue. I'm a normal height. As Julie was mentioning, the equity is, again, once legally authorized under statute, so to use it in this fashion is just fine. She's appalled on that. For the TIF bonds that we would use for the parking ramp, that is a normal way of funding parking ramps with TIF. So that's not a credit rating issue at all.
Okay, so I must have misheard that then, because I thought I heard somebody say something about credit rating risk, and that scared me, so.
There might be reputational risk, I think was in your.
Yeah, and that's why I read, there is a reputational risk, and I got that, and I read that in the staff report, and, you know, and that was going to be my next question is, you know, what does that mean, you know? And then, and then I heard somebody say, I thought I heard somebody say something about, you know, credit, but I didn't understand that, so thank you for clarifying that for me, Lord.
Was that a question? I just want to clarify, what does that mean? Sure? All right. Mayor Bussie, President Erickson, Councilmembers and Commissioners, reputational risk in that this is an unusual funding model for the city, this would be a large public input into this model. We would prefer, under any other circumstances, that there be private equity in this deal. This is unusual. We've said it many times, and so we would, eyes would be looking at us, and we would want to make sure that this project had the best chance of success if we were to put this much input into it.
Thanks for your response on that. And I assume, given what staff has put together tonight, that you're okay with that in terms of what you've got today? I'm assuming that that, you know, this fits part of that standard.
Mayor Bussie, President Erickson, Councilmembers. Mayor Bussie, President Erickson, council members and commissioners. We have to come up with a shorthand for that. We are continuing to analyze numbers. The port continues to be as diligent as possible. We have an outside advisor that is providing their own analysis of this deal, which we are benchmarking against the Mall of America's analysis. We want to make sure that we feel confident in any deal that we propose before we put a term sheet in front of you.
Additional questions? Mr. Hagan, I've got a question for you. So this is our, this is our third cut at this. And we've, we've missed the first two times. We're, we're back at this a third time. I, I need to, to hear you tell these bodies that this is going to work, that we are, we have found the right formula, that this is going to work, and we're going to move forward with this, and that we're going to cut a ribbon on a water park in about two and a half years.
Mayor, President Erickson, council members, Port Commissioners, if you can assure me that, that we're not going to see in that graph what we saw two years ago, yes, under current market conditions, we're confident this project can move forward. I think most would agree, most economists would agree, that we're at the top of the trough now, and, and instead of looking at it at the bottom, and, and we end up here, now we're looking at it here, how does it work? Our hope is, at the end of the year, those are, Fed rates are starting to come back down. We think they will. We're trying to pinpoint this project for the current credit market conditions, and provided that they don't deteriorate further, I think we're very confident that we can move this project forward. But I cannot assure you that the credit markets aren't going to deteriorate further. I don't know the future, but I think we're confident that if they stay where they're at, or they get better, we're in a position where, if we're at a 90-10 split, that...
Nice try. I give you credit for that.
That, that the, the structure of the deal that we've been talking about with staff can proceed.
Very good.
I have a kind of a follow-up on the same thing that Commissioner Lunch and Commissioner Keller also is talking about. Is this the best use? Is this exactly what you want to do? And I think from a procedural standpoint, essentially what the Port Authority does is respond to plans that you want to bring forward. And obviously, I think you've done a lot of analysis on different things that you could do. You're also aware of the limitations. You know as well as anybody how many dollars are going to be coming in there and what's going to be available and what can be used publicly, et cetera. So I, I think it's, you know, it's really incumbent upon you to tell us that, you know, this is what you want to do, and obviously there is some, some question about it, but I think we, we need to really answer that question for people so that they say, yeah, you know?
Yeah.
And it's your judgment. I mean, again, all we can do is respond to what you ask us.
Right. Mayor, Port, President, and bodies, by far, this, we believe this is the best we can do to, again, going back to as we worked with staff last summer, right? The goal was not how do, how big of a water park to build? What's the maximum amount of traffic we can drive to Mall of America using this $85 million? That was the goal. We looked at sports complex, we looked at the mixed-use complex, we looked at retail. There is nothing that comes close to a water park in terms of the amount of dollars, if you put it into an equi, and I did at one time, I wish, I wish I'd have printed it, basically, public dollars per tourist, and by, by a factor of three or four, it's the water park. Not that we don't want to do a sports complex, we do. Not that we don't want to do a mixed-use complex, we do, but we need additional public funding sources. The added challenge is the clock is ticking. We don't have time to go back and to another study, figure out what a, you sports complex might look like, get it designed, and spend this tool, or use this tool by the end of next year. This tool goes away. We have one opportunity, and we got one shot, and it's a water park. Now, if the boards decide that because there's no equity, they don't want to do a water park, totally your prerogative, but, but it's gone. This tool was needed back in 2022, right? When the economic climate was at its best. How much more so is it needed now? So again, if you want to run it through the gauntlet of regular city TIF, you're prerogative. You can do that. You want to look at it with that lens, you can do that. You do have a fiduciary responsibility to these public funds, and it's to the region. How are you using these funds for the regional benefit as well as local benefit? That's your call.
And if I could relate a question to that. In one of the renderings, couldn't help but notice next to the water park, a rather large hotel. If you could comment on that, I'd appreciate that, please.
I'm glad you noticed, Mr. Mayor, Port President, Boards. Well, we do anticipate there being a rather large hotel, right? This water park may be one of the hardest deals I've ever done. I think the hotel will not be, right? When, to have an opportunity to develop a hotel attached to this water park, not only attached to this water park, but attached to Mall of America and attached to our amusement park, we think will be a very desirable location for a hotel. So we have had conversations with numerous hotel groups. It really comes down to, look, we don't, we don't know if we have a water park yet, right? Let us get the water park under control. If we can at least get a term sheet and a, and a timeline for when we open, this water park will be open, then we can look to the hotel. But I'm glad you brought it up because the, the water park, this, this is about more than a water park. This, this is the launching pad to phase two. There will be a hotel. I hope there will be a sports complex and a mixed-use complex and other development. Once we get to that side of the road, there will be, I call them parasite projects, that want to attach themselves to this traffic generator, as well as Mall of America. So, but they don't want to be out there, or they can't be out there unless the water park is there. So it really is kind of the linchpin that kind of unlocks our development potential to phase two, which in turn creates additional TIF to go back into the TIF account, right? As we build hotels and other developments. I'm not sure the sports complex will generate that much TIF, if any, but the hotel and the private uses that will want to be around a sports complex and, and, and the water park will generate additional TIF as well.
Councilmember Nelson, is there a question down here as well? Councilmember Nelson, please.
Thank you. I know one of the important reasons for this project is to change that percentage of entertainment to retail. Where does this move the Mall of America to in terms of percentages?
Yes, Mayor, Port President, Boards. When we started out, I, I think Holly said 90-10, it was really about 80-20 when the mall was first opened. The amusement park was really the primary and almost the only attraction, a couple mini golf courses. We currently today are sitting about 70-30, right? So we've a lot of, displaced a lot of the, you, you've seen it out there, and I know your daughter works out there. A lot of the retail that has gone out has been replaced with restaurants and entertainment uses, and there's more coming in all the time. Every, every month, we have a new entertainment use that, that's coming into the mall. Most of those are two, three, four, 5,000 square feet. This will move us closer to a 60-40, closer to 60-40 split with the goal, obviously, or as, as we talked about earlier, being closer to 50-50. American Dream Project is actually 55% entertainment, 45% retail. So it's really diversifying, and I call it Amazon-proofing, right? The project where we're, we're delivering experiences you can't buy on the, on the internet, and, and that's a water park experience. And so for the sustainability of the mall, right? We've been talking about this since, long before COVID, long before what you're reading about Southdale, long before what you're reading about in these other malls, that we've got to transform ourselves. That, that's not, that's not a new concept for us, but how to do it, right? They're very difficult. They're rarely challenged. They take a lot of public funding. Even water parks take a lot of public funding, more than 17.3% or whatever our, our ratio is, is at in our master contract. So we have to come up with creative ways to get these projects done. Brings, you know, a good example is the Radisson Blue Project. If you recall, that was done in 2010. That was the own, to my knowledge, it was the only full-service hotel in the country being built at that time. We did it through some very creative financing, recovery zone bonds. Lori, you'll remember this. It was an incredibly complex deal that was a risky deal in a lot of regards, but I think we're all very thankful that we took those risks. It was, it was, there's, there's a good reward. It's a wonderful project that was built because of the creativity of putting that deal together. I think, I think five years from now, we're going to be saying things about the water park. Like, I'm really glad we used this tool. We found a way to get this done, and we can all, we can all enjoy the results of, of what that will produce for Bloomington, for the mall, for the hospitality industry.
Can I ask one follow-up? Please.
So as you shift through that, at what point do you drop the word mall from the name and just rename it Bloomington Dream? But I was serious about the first half of the question.
Mayor, Port, President, and Boards, we, you know, it, it's funny you asked that question because I've thought of that, right? When do we stop calling it a mall? Mall comes with the connotation that it's a mall, right? Fortunately, Mall of America, the brand is so strong, right? That it's recognized as a tourist destination and an entertainment destination. I, I would not doubt that that conversation will come up again and, and be discussed again, and, and maybe at some point it's appropriate, but it's not, it's not something we're looking at changing right now. I think, I think, like, you know, Disneyland, call it, what, you know, what is Disney? Everybody knows what Disneyland is, right? We all know what it is. Mall of America, we want to have that same brand awareness, and, and I think we do, where people understand what it is. But we want it to be understood for not just an amusement park, a wonderful indoor amusement park. We want it to be seen for amusement park and a water park, sports complex, mixed-use facility, right? All of these other uses, that, that's, that's where we're going with this project. It will be transformational as we add these additional uses to the project and be seen as the complex that we're going to be, not just a, a mall. I hope we're not seeing this just a mall.
Thank you. I know my wife is watching this intently tonight. And I know we don't necessarily see eye to eye on, on terms of the, the terms of this, but there is a risk of not doing anything at all. And I want you to, you know, as, as clearly as you can, because I think that that's, I think it's important for residents to understand if we do not do this project, what the impacts are for the mall.
Mayor, Port, President, and Boards, Councilmember Lohman, I'm glad you brought that up because as a, I, I truly believe the greatest risk to the Bloom, or City of Bloomington on this project is not doing this project, right? There is no Bloomington taxpayer dollars in this. This is a gift from the legislature and the region, I believe. If we don't do this, if we don't transform Mall of America, right? We're down 12% on our traffic. Now, this is four years after COVID, 12%. 12% of 40 million people is a lot of people. Seven or eight million people is more than probably all the other malls put together, right? It's not an insignificant amount of people that aren't here. How do we get them back, right? I don't know that that model, I, I believe that we kind of have stabilized now. We're not going to be back to 40 million people unless we add attractions like the water park and grow. The business travel, I'll speak for myself, right? I used to travel every month, travel three times a year now, right? I think that that's just the new model. We used to get a lot of business travel that came to the Twin Cities, where they're going to meet with Cargill, or 3M, or Target. They would stop at Mall of America. They would be a, a customer of ours. They're just not coming through, and it's not because they don't like Mall of America anymore. This is not coming to town anymore. That, that model has changed. International travel, I mean, the, every, the world has changed, right? Since COVID. And, and so we need to change as well. We've been talking about pre-COVID. Not a new concept. Again, you've heard me preaching this for going on 15 years now. We, we, we're going two directions. We're either growing or we're dying. And to grow, we need to grow with new uses, not more retail, new entertainment uses. And I don't think there's any, I think everybody understands that concept now, that, that's what we have to do. So if we stagnate, right? We're going to, traffic and tourism are going to decline. That not only impacts Mall of America, that impacts the hospitality industry, that impacts the restaurants, that impacts Hazelwood, one of our favorite restaurants across the street, if, if our traffic and tourism decreases. I think right now we stabilized. We need a way to inject, draw more traffic and tourism, and there's no better way, in our opinion, than adding this water park.
I'm not sure when you said Hazelwood, why you pointed at me.
I had lunch with you there.
How many times have you seen me there? I'm not sure, but... Yeah, everybody's counting, unfortunately. Council, Port, additional questions? Wrap-up summation or? Councilmember Lohman.
I'll ready for wrap-up and summation here. So, you know, again, I want to thank the staff for the hard work that you've done, the mall, and also, you know, I want to thank the city manager, the Port President, the mayor, anybody else I may have missed in trying to bring this thing forward. You know, on the positive side of this, you know, certainly I'm, I'm a capitalist and I can see a, you know, a good deal. I know my children are at home rooting for, for this water park so they can have their birthdays there. And when I think about this in terms of what it's at stake for our taxpayers, this is a, a incredible opportunity to, for future taxpayers in terms of additional revenue, in terms of what those taxpayers will, will be able to get long after many of us will be on this board. And I think that's something that I, I'm thinking about as I, Mayor, look at this particular The mall is an institution, that is a major institution or a community, and, and I, I know that for many, for, for many years, sometimes has gotten a bad reputation or somehow, you know, gets these special deals and that type of thing, but it's a major contributor to our community, and I think we need to remember that as we, we make these decisions of what they have been able to give. Now, on the other hand, the environmentalist in me, as I look at this particular proposal, is, is very concerned. But I, I do know that the mall is there and willing to have that dialogue and that conversation, and, and there's a history there in terms of, of the mall doing things with respect to environmental things without being asked. And so I am going to be looking very carefully, since we do have a climate emergency and the, the very impact of this building in terms of what that means in terms of future generations as well. It's not just the fun sugar candy that, that my children would enjoy, but it's also what type of world that we're going to leave future generations with that building. And so that, I'm going to be watching that very carefully between now and the time, Mayor, that we make this decision about this particular building. And I'm hoping on the night that we can get to some of the details about that impact and how we can mitigate that as best as possible. And again, with that being said, I also understand we're in a capitalistic market, and, you know, we can only do what's reasonable around that. And the last piece is around equity here. This is unprecedented to not have equity here, and we must take this seriously. You know, we're, this is a statement when we, when we do this, and I think we need to be careful when we, we make decisions like this. Now, we have a great partner in this, but, you know, will we do this for other partners? And I understand this is a, you know, a, a special type of thing that we're doing, you know, if we do move forward this, but this is a statement from, you know, we have a credit rating that we have too, and this, this shows something to the market, and I think we need to, you know, be incredibly careful with how we do this. And so I, I think that staff has taken that into account from what I've seen so far, and I'm looking forward to continue to have that dialogue. But I continue, as a councilmember, to have that concern around that in, in terms of, are we doing everything we can do to make sure that that makes sense moving forward? And finally, I would say that, that in terms of this, as we look at it, that I, I do not want to discount the fact that the mall is also a taxpayer in the city of Bloomington. With that being said, I hope that staff will continue to move forward to get the best deal for all taxpayers in Bloomington, that we continue to press this to, to give every dime and every bit of money we can get out of this particular proposal, given the risk with respect to equity. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Others wishing to chime in? Mr. President, the last word?
Well, we've obviously got some work to do. Unfortunately, with something like this, because of the, the December 25 deadline, we have kind of had to move perhaps faster on this than people might be comfortable with. That's one of those things that come up from time to time, and, and I think all we can try to, to do is to endeavor to get information to people. And I think, again, in terms of a project, I've been in close communication with staff, and, and I know that how hard they've, they've been working on getting this done, and Shane has been an integral part of this team, and, and so I, I think we have to look at this as responding to requests from the mall. They're the ones that have to make the primary business decision about what they want to do, they know what the resources are, and I, I think in that context... And I think in that context, we'll have to carefully go through, and I'm sure we'll have some spirited discussions, and everybody might not agree. That's what we get into. So I think I look forward to the next several weeks and getting more information and dealing with it. And again, in terms of timing, there's going to be a term sheet that we will be discussing. The current dates for that are the 15th and the 16th, and that would be, the bodies would be asked to approve it at that point. And then, of course, that directs staff to bring back definitive agreements, which will be coming back later. And nothing is final until the definitive agreements are signed. So I think in terms of time for people to kind of get used to these things and that, you know, we do have a little time, but we do need to move, and we want to take advantage of this tool that is available to us within the constraints.
Thank you. Mr. President? Unless there's anyone else, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hagan, Mr. Lehrer. Thanks for being here this evening. Thank you very much to staff for the information and the well-presented and well-thought-out and very clear information that you were able to provide to us. And Council and Port, thank you for the discussion tonight. And this is, I mean, it's been, it was two hours of questions, basically, and I hope we got them all answered or as many answered as we possibly could. And I would agree with you, Mr. President. This is the first part. This was an information part. The conversation continues between both bodies, and I'm looking forward to that conversation continuing. So thank you all also very much. On behalf of the City Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn this meeting of the City Council with the joint meeting with the Port Authority.
So moved.
Motion and a second to adjourn the City Council meeting. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. We are adjourned.
And I will adjourn the Port Authority.
Very good. Thank you all.